All right, thank you, John. We'd like to welcome everybody to our Iron County Commission meeting this Monday, the 24th day of November. Experiencing beautiful weather, excited for the holidays this week. We'll get started this morning. Jeanie Bartholomew will offer our opening prayer and Carson Reed following that will lead us in the pledge.
My dear heavenly fathers, we come before this meeting today, we are so thankful for all that thou has given us. Thankful for the moisture that we have received and very appreciative of that. As we continue through this meeting, I ask that you please bless the commissioners that the decisions that they have to make will be the best for the citizens of our county. Thank you again for all thy blessings thou give us in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We will now go to our approving the agenda for, or the minutes, I mean, for November 10th. Is there any discussion on those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't have any discussion.
No, neither do I. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 10th, Commission meeting.
Second.
Good move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Then we'll go to the approval of claims for payment from November 10th, 2025 to November 23rd, 25.
I'll move for approval of the claims for payment from November 10th, 2025 to November 23rd, 2025.
Second, move to second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. All right, we'll now go to our departmental reports and start with Luke, our auditor.
Good morning. Okay, so today first I want to talk about our Board of Equalization, or BOE as it's called. So there is a new legislation that takes effect in 2026. This came from SB 202 last year. And under this legislation, county personnel involved in the BOE process are required to receive a designation through the Utah State Tax Commission before participating in BOE activities. So this designation is known as the County Property Tax Designation. And what it consists of is two one-day classes. There's no exam for these classes and the dates that they're going to be held here is April 21st through 22nd. This is mainly going to affect my office and you guys. So you guys have to go to this class and get this designation since you are the Board of Equalization. So put that on your calendars, April 21st through 22nd. If you can't make that one, they're going to be holding one in Washington County, one in Millard County, other counties throughout the state.
And where is this being held?
We're gonna, it's gonna be here at the courthouse. So the State Tax Commission will come here. They're gonna, there's about ten.
It's a two-day training?
Yeah. There's about 10 of them throughout the state during the year, but that has to be done next year. And I got a handout on it, I'll give you. So for this year, BOE is about complete. Michaela is going to present a few other abatement applications that have been applied since tax bills have gone out. So she'll do that later today during Commission meeting. And then there is a drafted bill from Senator Dan McKay. I talked a little bit about this last time, about changing the abatement program, but he did present that to the Revenue and Taxation Committee last week during the interim session and they actually voted no on it, so it didn't pass. But I'm sure he'll change some things and bring it back during the session next year. Budget, so today's the public hearing for next year's budget, so I'll do a presentation on that and then we'll have a public comment. And then next Commission meeting, so the December meeting, we will also have a public hearing on adjusting this year's budget, so find some final adjustments before year end. So I'm in the process of putting those together. But yeah, that's about all I have today. So here's this.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
All right, Stephanie, Council on Aging. Before you start, Stephanie, did you get that plate? Have they got that coming?
No.
Is Cedar Welding, did you give them the go?
Um, so I gave them the go and we have pine forks needed up front and just waiting for Chris to call me back when we're gonna install it.
Okay.
So I will call him again today. Don't know if the holidays or anything's ruining that or...
I've got a good relationship with Chris, if you, I mean, he's done some work for me. He's our neighbor and I can, if you need help, let me help you.
I appreciate that. I was like thinking, it's getting cold now, what's going on? Okay, sorry, keep forgetting how short I am sometimes. So this year, through October, the Cedar Center has delivered 5,493 Mills on Wheels Mills compared to 4,377 Mills at this time last year. So that's a 25 and a half percent increase. The Parowin Center has delivered 3,613 Mills, up from 3,031, so a 19.22% increase. And this is mainly due to a lot of people moving in and also getting the word out there that there are resources to help those that are homebound. So even despite that, with the rising food prices and the high number of Mills, we actually are remaining on track with our food budget and we've identified a couple areas we can cut some costs in, and so I think that's gonna keep us on that right track. So our budget's right on, so I'm doing, we're doing great on that. In July, we received an additional $11,000 grant from the Social Services Block Grant from five county and that helps support our transportation services for picking seniors up from their homes and bringing them into the senior center to take part of activities and the Mills there. We're still in need of volunteer drivers. As you know, most of our drivers for Mills on Wheels are volunteers. We actually only have three paid employees between the two centers. And I actually have a total of seven routes that go out three days a week. Some of those routes are just, you know, getting difficult for some people to do. So we're gonna need to probably split that Enoch route sooner than I wanted to. Right now, that route currently covers 26 stops. That's 32 Mills and it takes about two and a half hours to complete. Where the rest of my routes that are within Cedar, even if they're kind of close to the same number of stops, takes an hour or less. That covers also approximately 35 miles and you divide the east and west of Enoch.
So Stephanie, when it comes to volunteers, have we, what's your process? Just put the word out? I mean, have we gone to the churches in our communities and asked them for volunteers?
Um, I haven't done it that way. We've put it in our newsletter.
It's gotta be a real rewarding job to go out and visit our seniors. I'll bet that's really, really kind of a fun thing if you had, you know, the time to do it. I just wondered if you reach out to the different churches in town and...
And maybe that's a good way to do it.
Maybe they could put the word out with their congregations and I'll bet you could find some volunteers that way.
I mean, I'll be honest, like I've got some volunteers. I've got one that's been doing it for 16 years, been volunteering Mills on Wheels same route for 16 years. And I've got another one that, he told me, if you paid me, I would quit. He's like, I want to give back. So it is amazing.
I think there'd be a lot of people.
So qualifications, other than a driver's license and a good attitude and time.
Of course, they have to pass a drug screen, just like working for Iron County. You're driving a county vehicle. The in and out of the vehicle can be kind of difficult if there's a lot of that, if you have knee problems or back problems, but other than that, I just need the time and it's three days a week, you know, at the most, but most of them just do one day a week. I only have about three different alternate drivers, which are great, but like everybody says, I don't want to take the Enoch route, so that makes it difficult. And I think I've got some drivers that are about to retire.
Just maybe make a note, I think Greg Powell is still over the Interfaith Alliance.
Okay.
Oh Greg?
I do not.
You could read, I can text you his phone number, but I'd reach out to Greg, because he knows, he knows, he's got contacts with a lot of the different, you know, different... And then I'd probably reach out to, oh shoot, Smith.
Vance.
Vance Smith.
Okay.
He's our area, yes, he's the Area 70 for the LDS Church.
Okay.
You might reach out to him and he could put the word out through the different stakes.
That'd be great.
And I'll bet you could find some people that way.
That would be great.
And I could text you both those phone numbers.
I would love it, thank you. It's like I'll have people say they want to do it and then they'll fill out an application and then I never see them again. So. Also, we did recently re-carpet the Cedar Reception Area. It was very worn and stained and had help patching up holes and cracks and stuff in the drywall, so it looks really nice and it's been a much more welcoming space, especially with having somebody sitting at that front desk greeting the people that walk in, explaining what's going on. I will tell you, probably every single day, I at least have one new person that walks in saying, "I just moved here, what's this all about?" So it's pretty great. So the attendance at the Cedar Center has grown so much that the biggest complaint we are having is parking. So there is nowhere to park when that parking lot is full. They're, they're a block or two up and down the street and having to walk and so that's probably my biggest gripe, but in reality, I don't know a really good solution where the location is unless we're taking over the park. So, but that's, I mean, that's a good problem to have is that there's so many people that the parking is difficult. So I love that. Just an example, like when I first started, the highest numbers in bingo attendance was about 25 and now we're seeing over 50. So, and that's just bingo. So we've also experienced several staffing changes since the half of the year. We welcomed two new Mills on Wheels drivers. We had Bill Duncan in Parowin and Angie in Cedar. They're both doing exceptional work. They've consistently receiving good feedback and they're keeping our numbers on, which is great. And we hired two new activity directors. We've got Brittany Robertson in Parowin and Amber Nesson in Cedar. And they have just hit the ground running. They are so excited and a lot of enthusiasm and they have a lot of great ideas. So I see this working out really well. And then additionally, we promoted Malia from Assistant Cook to Head Cook because she has a lot of drive and determination and she's very organized and creative and I think she's gonna do very well with that. So we're just hiring for another Assistant Cook right now and then we'll be fully staffed with our staffs. And then we had our Senior Prom in June, was the first time we ever did that. We sold out of all of our tickets, which was awesome. We had Art Vargas from Vegas. He's a performer down there. He came up and performed and everybody loved him. And everybody enjoyed the dancing and the getting dressed up and we had some snacks and stuff and everybody said it was the most fun they have ever had at the senior center. So we're definitely looking at doing that again. And then we also had a rowdy bingo night, so it's hard to be super rowdy. A lot of people with the hearing aids and stuff, it's hard for them to hear the numbers, but then we also have the excited people that like to be rowdy, so they did a whole rowdy night in October and they did buy tickets for that because we had pretty nice prizes and I think they play like nine rounds and the different shapes, kind of like you do in Mesquite and everybody had a great time and it went off pretty well. So now people are asking when we're doing that again. So I just also want to say, you know, we're in Thanksgiving, we're supposed to be thankful for people. I really want to say how thankful I am to the many volunteers. I have more than 30 volunteers between the two centers. If we didn't have them, like, we wouldn't be running. You know, that's just, it's super amazing. I also want to thank our Maintenance Department, Thane and Landon do such a great job on our lawn. We're getting compliments all the time about how much nicer our place looks since they've taken over. They want to hire them themselves. As well as like any little thing that has been breaking or needing help with, like they're always right there. And the Fleet Department has been so great, whether it's an issue with tire, low tire pressure, I have no idea why this truck is making this noise. And so they've been great, so I really want to thank them. And of course, Human Resources, they have been a huge support for me and our department and so I just, I just needed to put that out there. So I don't think sometimes we hear enough about how amazing our own departments are. So, any questions?
Nope.
No.
Are you, are you still using, is the Quilters Guild still using the basement?
Yes, they are.
Is that working out good for them?
It is working out pretty good, yeah. They've got a new president right now and she's been...
The radio, the ham radio folks, are they still having their meetings there?
They are.
Anybody else using the facility or...
And we also have an OHV club that uses it as well. So, and they always donate money to us around Christmas time, which is great. That helps us out a lot. We've done pretty good on our donations this year. I've been pretty impressed by the people.
We talked about maybe putting an LVP instead of refinishing those maple floors, putting an LVP over them. Have you pursued that at all?
I have been so busy with the staff changes, I have not had a chance to get somebody over there to give a price on that. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, you're fine. I just...
I will get on it, I promise. Get me through the holidays.
I'm just, you could get a price for the refinishing of the floors, but I'm almost...
That I did get a price. Yeah, that was...
I almost wonder how, it might be just as cheap to do LVP and then you don't have to ever refinish them. They'll last for 30 years and...
Honestly, we could get it to match the rest of the floors that are in there and I think it would look really nice.
Right, right.
And no more worrying about waxing.
Exactly. I think that might be a good way to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Hey, I did meet, I met with Josh at IT. He's got, I think he's still waiting on some things. He has a stack of stuff in his office.
Yes, we need the electrical, I think it's Marshall, Marshall Evans is supposed to come out and...
I think so.
Run the electrical for our cameras and...
Right, he's, he's got all the, he's got all the hardware in his office, so it's, it's really a thing.
That's great.
Stephanie, would you write your cell phone number on here for me? And I'll text you those phone numbers. Okay, thank you. Let's see, we're next, we're at Tourism. Maria. You know, I was talking to Maria before you start. I was talking to Chad Fane yesterday.
Yeah.
Or no, on Saturday, I was talking to Chad. But he's bringing some big people into town. I was impressed. He's bringing some from Montana, from California, some teams flying in to have tournaments. Is that, that's pretty cool. I was, I was surprised at how many people are coming in to use that rink, so that's, that's good for Iron County.
Yeah, we, we've tried to meet with him and his family. And there's different people who operate that rink, so there's different groups, so it gets a little confusing. So, but so far, he hasn't...
He's the main manager of it?
He's the owner and manager, but there are other groups that actually bring in stuff as well. So it gets kind of convoluted. But so far, they haven't wanted any assistance from us. They feel pretty good about what they're doing, so. So we're here, we're here, but we have lots of things going on, so. But we'll continue to try and work with them, so. Uh, let's talk tourism. So tourism to date, so so right now, collections, TRT collections are down about 6% to date. So a lot of that is, we're still waiting, I would be more worried in December because December is our biggest month of collection. It reflects October and October was really, really busy, so. So I'm not terribly worried about them being down. I feel like we'll probably make it up. And just looking at who remitted, it was just a small list and so that means not everybody has remitted up to this date, so. So we'll keep our eyes on that, but you know, average daily rate as well as occupancy stayed the same, so that report is more up to date than TRT collections, so I feel like we're okay. And then restaurant tax, we're 14% over last year. Some of that is that we're collecting from like gas stations and, you know, some of those...
How much do you think that played into it?
I don't know, I'm trying to figure it out. I mean, I'm still kind of looking at it, are they? But some of it, some of it's in there for sure. As well as, you know, the cost of food has gone up, so your cost of your overall bill has gone up, so your tax is gonna be higher too, so. But it feels like we're busy and we have more restaurants too, so that, we've definitely added quite a few just in the last couple of months, so. That's gonna have an impact on those, on those revenues.
As a percentage, how does your, how does TRT compare to TRCC, like from the revenue that you receive?
Uh, TRT is more.
TRT is more?
Uh huh, quite a bit more. So it's like 2.5, 2.6, where restaurant tax is 1.4, 1.5, so...
Almost double?
Yeah, so...
I was curious on that.
We still, they're still very impactful taxes and that's, they're very well used in our county. So speaking of that, so the Iron County Restaurant Tax met earlier in November and as you can see, these are the projects that submitted for funds and the allocations that we recommend to the, to the Commission. So we received applications from the Golf Course, Cross Hollows, the Iron West. It's like a playing field, it's like a soccer field. The BLM, SUU, SUMA, Shakespeare for marketing and development, Utah Summer Games, the Airport in Bryanhead Town. Total requests were over $800,000 and we have allocated $523,000 for those projects. If you want me to go over what they were, I can, or...
That $523,000, is that a total disbursement of what you had available or is there other available?
There's other available, so not, so I think we left, there's about 150, almost 200,000 that's left. And we like to keep that just in case something comes up, you know, that's gonna be, you know, just one of those once in a lifetime kind of events.
I'd be interested to know who you gave what to.
Um, okay, so the Golf Course, that was for their new bathroom.
Inside the clubhouse?
No, it's out on, what? I'm trying to remember.
I'm not sure which hole.
It's a hole.
It's a hole. So they don't have to pee in the bushes.
So they're on, it's pretty, I think there's an existing bathroom there. I think they're tearing it down if I remember right, so. It's like something small, but very old. And then Cross Hollows, it's spider boxes and the portable air coolers and new drag. We did not fund the tables and chairs of the mobile stage. And then we provided them with some promotional funds to recruit new events. The Iron West, we provided funds for the new bathroom and to, they asked to pave the parking lot, well, we provided enough funds that they could at least level the parking lot and put gravel down. SUU, we provided funds for their content series. SUMA is for exhibits, social media and to support the Day of the Dead Festival. Shakespeare is for, for new marketing as well as sound and lighting for the Randall Jones Theater. Utah Summer Games is for their promotional and organizational needs to support the 40th anniversary of the Summer Games. And then Cedar City Airport is for digital marketing. And then Bryanhead Town is to assist with chairlift operation in the summertime to create an attraction for Bryanhead. As you can see, they were, not everybody received what they asked for. This was based on a point system and on their application. So if their application was poor, they didn't receive full funding, you know, those, better applications received close to their ask or full funding. Any questions on that? So great projects and really, really good, we had some really great applications. The BLM gave us an application that was really good, so. Just a... I don't really want to go into, like, you can see where we've been, where the allocations are in this report, where the revenues are coming from and where, where we're at with occupancy. And then I did attach, so we have, I've talked about Pleaser AI in the past. You know, it's a software that helps us track visitors and how they're spending their money, where they're coming from. They've provided us with a brand new report just on Friday, which was fantastic, so it gives us a really great idea as to what's actually happening and some data in terms of our visitation, so. If you look at that report, we had 2.6 million total trips to Iron County and 3.9 million visit nights. So that's not rooms necessarily, rooms booked, that's amount of people who have been in the county staying overnight, so. So 75% of that are, of the trips are people who are overnight trips and 656,000 are just day trips. And our top market right now is Las Vegas. Majority of the, of how they're spending their dollars is on, 33% is on hotels. 20, 30% is on like retail and surprisingly, 14% is on groceries and food stores. So. Huh?
Get that Costco.
Hey, we got Winko.
That's right.
Smith's Marketplace.
I'm sorry for my ignorance, but what is ADR?
Um, average daily rate.
Okay.
So that's the.
Of the, of the hotels?
Of the hotels, so that's what the average daily, the rate they're charging that day across the board of those who are collecting, or who are collecting the information and it's compiling into the report. So.
And that doesn't include taxes or anything?
Not that I'm aware of. Any questions regarding tourism? All right, we'll move on to parks. So, so parks, we're doing well. Uh, we wanna uh, start out saying, we wanna say thank you to Mike Worland for all of his assistance over the years. Um, he's been a great asset to, to our department, particularly with Bryce. Um, they meet often and he has, uh, definitely gone after a lot of money, it's, um, a lot of grants in order to support what we're trying to do in terms of recreation and providing a great, um, experience for, for residents and for our visitors, so, uh, we just wanna extend that appreciation to him, uh, as he's retiring. Uh, we did host the mountain bike, uh, state championship, October seventeenth and eighteenth. Um, I've attached a report that we had, that we run through Pleaser AI. So, so just to let you know, there were uh, thirteen thousand nine hundred plus visits to the park during that weekend. Um, visit frequency was one point five one, so they, visitors were there one point five one times during that weekend. Um, average dwell time was a hundred and fifty-three minutes, so. A majority, it's, uh, that report breaks down like where people are coming from, so we were seeing people from Park City, Draper, Kaysville, Provo, and so forth. So it definitely has a huge impact on our, um, on our area. Um, they have let us know that they are not bringing the championship back in twenty twenty-six.
Not?
They are not. They are, um, they want to move that race around the state. Um, we're disappointed, um, but we're gonna still try and see if we can't convince them that they should bring it back. Just because we're, uh, our location is just so ideal for those teams, uh, the race is, the, the race infrastructure is there, we've done a lot of improvements, it's just, it's a fantastic race and a great economic driver, so.
Can you remind us what Bruce did to help with the neighbors there?
Yes, so, uh, we, so the road department paved about a mile worth, miles worth of road so that they could move the race up into the actual park and not block off the neighbors who are right there. Um, and so it still blocks them off, but not as much. Um, and so he paved that road, um, as well as did some improvements along the road that goes south where their two neighbors are. Um, we had really great responses from the neighbors this year, so, um, they were very, very pleased. In fact, one came in just to tell us that she appreciated all the hard work we had done, so.
Did they say where they're moving it to?
Uh, St., it sounds like it's St. George. So. I don't know where it's going in St. George, cause their old place is gone, it's housing development, so. Um, but they are bringing two regional races, so we're happy about that. Um, but it doesn't make up, it's not the same, so, um, but we'll keep on them. Uh, uh, revenue generated to date is fourteen thousand one hundred and forty-eight, that's revenue from special events, um, campground, camping fees, as well as pavilion fees. Um, it is slightly down. Uh, Wood Ranch, just to give, just to keep you up to date on in terms of what's happening with the parks. Um, it's shut down for the winter. Um, and, uh, we're working with the state forestry crew to assist in burning the remaining slash piles um, that we were unable to get to last winter. Five Mile, we completed our first official season with the, open to the public. Um, we didn't have a lot of issues this year, so we're happy with how that, how that worked out.
Did we end up having a host?
No, no.
Didn't end up doing that?
We did not end up doing that.
Is that something we're still considering or not really?
Yeah, we're considering it, so, but there's things we need to get in place before we can do that.
Who?
No water, so that's part of the problem.
Right, who was, who ended up locking up every night?
Oh, we did not lock it every night. No, so thankfully. We had a few issues, Parwin, um, police went up as many times as they could and to look at what's happening, didn't report it a lot. You were up there several ti- you know, you made it.
There was a couple of campfires that weren't extinguished. But no, I mean, just glowing coals, extinguished a few campfires. Didn't ever really, I, I, to my knowledge, we didn't run across any overnight campers. Um, it was really pretty quiet.
Yeah, it's, we had a problem that first night we opened, that first weekend we opened and not since. I think because there's so many signs that say no camping, um, I think it's kind of gotten people's attention, I'm hoping anyways, but we didn't really have any problems, so.
I've heard real positive comments.
Yeah, we've, and the use was really good, um.
Lovely sight, I've used it.
Yeah, a lot of people in the county have used it, so.
The creek is so beautiful, it's just clean, clear water and it's, it's different.
It is different than Cold Creek.
It's a, it's, it is a really pretty place. I am glad we saved it, so I am glad. There were days I wasn't so sure, so.
Again, thanks to Mike Worland.
My, again, thanks to Mike, well, and Bryce, and Bryce has been on that, so, um, I can't even tell you how proud I am of Bryce. Um, we are working with the jail crew again to work with, um, material that's been piled up there. As you know, the Forest Service went through and cut. Um, did a, quite a bit of a treatment removal on a thinning project and there's a lot of slash piles, so we've gotta work with that. I'm gonna go with Bryce after this meeting and we're gonna go look at all of that. Um, and then Three Peaks, wanna say thank you to the jail crew, they helped pour, um, some concrete pads for the new group pavilions. Um, and we're finishing up those, those smaller pavilions in that group site area. And again, state fire and forestry will assist with burning the slash piles this winter and the water system has been winterized. And then last, um, the shooting range, Jay Adams has completed the survey and marked the southern boundary extension. Um, I've attached the map so that you can see that. Um, we're just now waiting on Rich to finalize, um, the approval process with the BLM. Any questions?
Great report.
Okay, thank you.
As always, I spent a lot of time with Maria, the, in, recently and.
Recently.
No, I just said, her office is great. I, I do, can I give Kaylee a shout out?
Yes, absolutely.
So, uh, this isn't necessarily county related. Uh, recently, if we all remember back, couple of years to the hate family tragedy that we experienced in Enic. Had some family members reach out that were concerned about some issues with social media. Um, and how to, uh, update Tasha's account because of some photos on there that they were probably not appropriate anymore. I sent them to Kaylee, uh, cause she's our social media specialist and, uh, she took care of them. Like in a day's time, had everything worked out with them and, and helped them. They were super appreciative uh, for that.
Thank you.
Kay, Kaylee's good people.
Yeah. Well, she'll probably hear this on, cause she follows this, so she'll probably hear it on the recording, but I will make sure to pass that along.
Yeah, they were very appreciative.
She's awesome.
Of her help and, and, uh, you know, I appreciated that a lot. I don't know, I didn't, I didn't, I'm not a social media expert, but I, like, I know where there is one, so. No, I really appreciate Kaylee, really, it, I spent enough time in that building, your whole staff is awesome. I don't, I don't, there's no chinks in the armor, they're, they're. Everybody's really good and, I mean, they come out to a lot of events, they're not just in the office, they're out and about. In fact, I ran into Kaylee over here the other day when she was, she was coming down from Bryanhead.
She went to the opening, yeah.
Checking out the opening and, and such, so they work really hard, I just appreciate your office.
Thank you.
They're great.
Maria, what about your floor? Do we talked about maybe just, didn't we talk about doing LVP on your floor as well?
Um, we have talked about it now, we've had LVP, LVP that was put down before and we had to rip it up.
What happened?
Because of the furniture, cause we have so much furnishing, furniture going back and forth. Everything moves on wheels in our office, so.
It just tore it up?
It tore it up, like, in a brief amount of time.
I wonder, how many years ago was this?
Uh, it was at least four or five, it was prior to COVID. Yeah, so it was like twenty nineteen when we had done it.
Tough, I'm just wondering.
Isn't it just hardwood now, is that what you've got?
We have hardwood, yes, throughout, except in the DUP. They have the, the LVP, but they don't have as much traffic as we do in that part of the building, so.
And it's held up okay?
Um, yeah, there's scratch, there's definitely scratches in it, so, but it looks better than what we.
Stuff, I don't know if they've improved it that much over the last four or five years, but I just hear, you know, that it's really durable, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't have it in my home, so I don't know.
I think we have to look.
A lot of people use it.
We have to look at other thing, we need to look at something else, maybe like tile for our building, so, but. Not to, not this year. But for the senior center, I don't know.
My problem with tiles is cold, it's, it's, yeah, anyway, so, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Sheriff.
Good morning. I always like following Maria because it causes me to be grateful I only have to do one report. So SWAT team, uh, has been busy as always, uh, they've had twenty callouts year to date, so far this year on the Drug Task Force. Uh, we've changed some personnel up there, the new commander is Sergeant Brian Moore from Cedar City Police Department. And Cedar also replaced, uh, one of their agents up there. So they now have Officer Clint Anderson, along with our two deputies that are up there working. With the Iron County Sheriff's Office, uh, partnership with Washington County Task Force Bomb Squad is, you're aware, we have one explosive canine that is currently working with them. Uh, they've given us the funding to purchase the second dog, which we have purchased. And we will begin the training on that dog in January. So, yeah, here, within the next year, we'll have, uh, two explosive detection canines operating out of the sheriff's office and, and with the, uh, Washington County Bomb Squad. On the next slide, there, those are our numbers, the second number was, uh, the total, uh, numbers in those categories for last year. The first number is, uh, what we have year to date this year. Uh, draw your attention down to the very bottom right, total reports. Uh, right now, we're almost a thousand reports over what we were last year. So, now you can see that we're, uh, with the growth of the county, we're becoming much, much busier. If there's any, any questions that you have on any of those, I'd be happy to address those.
Drug cases look like they might be down this year?
Yeah, a little bit, a little bit this year. One of the things that we're, you know, and, and you're aware of this as well, is one of the things that we find with drug cases is we're finding a lot more weapons involved in the drug cases, so, which is always a big concern. You know, it used to be twenty years ago, uh, before, uh, the, the change of the, uh, state law. We never found firearms, very, very rarely did we ever find firearms involved with drugs. And, uh, after about two thousand fifteen, when the, the state changed the law and, and you know, lowered the consequence of drug crimes, then we started seeing, uh, firearms involved a lot more, which is kind of interesting because that takes it back up over into a ser- serious felony again. So, uh, you know, it's, it's still, i- it just becomes more dangerous now than it ever has been before. Any other questions at all there? Jumping over the current issues, uh, Rocky Mountain Information Network is RIMMEN. That's our eight-state region, uh, that, which is part of RIS, RIS is the Regional Information Support System. It's a federal funded program nationwide and it's, it's a a group that provides law enforcement a tremendous amount of, of support in a number of different ways. One of the things that it does for us is, for example, in our, our eight-state region is it gives us a collection point to be able to, uh, take information. If, say, for example, if we've got a warrant for a, a very dangerous person, we can send that through RIMMEN and get that pushed out to the eight states in our region to help us look for that person if we don't know where they're going to be. We're able to coordinate a lot of things through them, uh, if you look at like RIS Safe. RIS Safe is a deconfliction program. So if a law enforcement agency, say for example, uh, the US Marshals is coming to Iron County to do a violent felony warrant, then they can enter that information into RIS Safe and that allows all the law enforcement jurisdictions in Iron County to, to be aware of what it is that they're doing. So we don't have the, uh, blue on blue, uh, instances. Helps keep everybody safe. RIS Intel, uh, again, uh, going back to what I was sharing about warrants and things like that. If there's, uh, an important piece of intelligence information that's necessary for law enforcement agents within the region or across the nation, then, uh, RIMMEN's able to coordinate that for us. Uh, the National Case Coordination System is a new, uh, part, which is basically going back to the, the, uh, drug investigation units, is to help make sure that everybody knows what everybody else is investigating. So like, if our Drug Task Force here has a case that has crossed out of Iron County down into Washington County and we're getting ready to go serve warrants down there, then they can go into the NCCS and make sure that Washington County's Drug Tor- Force isn't working a, a case on that same, uh, warrant. So that we don't mess up an investigation that might have bigger, uh, ramifications and, and uh, you know, be able to, to resolve more issues than what our warrant has. So we're able to coordinate those types of things. One of the other things that RIS does is they, they give us technologies that we could never afford by ourselves. I'll give you a couple of, of examples. Like, uh, video type stuff. Uh, our last officer involved shooting, we were able to send our body worn camera footage down to RIMMEN. They were able to slow that body camera, uh, video down and show that the suspect fired two rounds at our deputies before our deputies returned fire. So it helps show that there was an actual, uh, threat of deadly force towards our deputies before, before they took action. On our last homicide, uh, we were able to, to download the cell phone information from the cell phone towers and we're able to track the phone of the suspects, showing that the suspect vehicle was behind the victim vehicle, uh, from the time we picked him up until, uh, the shooting took place and when they returned back. So they've got technologies that we just, we can't afford. You know, we just don't have the, the money to be able to support them, we don't have, you know, the, the technology, the, uh, yeah, or the people to be able to do those types of things. So why is this important? The reason it's important is because it's federally funded and their budget got cut five percent this year. That affects every, every law enforcement agency in the nation. And so, uh, this is pretty important to us. You know, this is something that we need to make sure that our congressional leaders are very aware of and. that our congressional leaders are very aware of and that they support it because they understand that this is something that's critical, uh, to the success of, of high-profile investigations throughout the nation. And it helps keep, uh, officers and deputies safe across the nation, as well as, you know, not only state, local, but also our federal partners as well. So it, it's something that's important for everybody. Uh, I was just down there in Phoenix, uh, last week for the RIMMEN Executive Committee meeting, and we had a couple of, uh, things that were brought up. One is, uh, Tren de Agua, uh, their, uh, terrorist group out of Venezuela that's been coming in, a gang that's been coming into, uh, the United States pretty robustly, and they're getting pretty heavy up into Salt Lake right now. They, their drug of choice that they push is, uh, pink ketamine, which they call, uh, TUCI. You know, one of the things that's been interesting is even though they don't have partnerships with, like, say, for example, MS-13, because MS-13 deals in one particular drug and they don't deal in the ketamine, they don't care if, uh, TDA is, they're operating within that same area. As a result, uh, Denver and Salt Lake have become the primary hubs for them bringing ketamine into the United States. That's something that we need to be aware of. Uh, we haven't seen it down here yet, but, you know, we need to, to be keenly aware of that and, and be paying attention to that. One of the other things for especially our credit unions that they need to be aware of is TDA does something called jackpotting, where they, uh, take their laptop computers and plant a virus into the ATM machines, primarily of credit unions, because they think that banks have the, the funding to be able to provide the software to protect against their, uh, against their threat. And so they usually hit, uh, ATM machines at, at credit unions in rural areas that they don't think have the, the software to protect it. And basically what it does is it overrides the system and it tells them that for every bill that they put in, that it has to return two bills, for example. And they've had, uh, what they could, again, like I said, what they call jackpotting, where they have, uh, uh, they've, they've got up to a hundred thousand dollars out of a ATM, single ATM machine in the past. So those are things that, again, we need to be keenly aware of, because this is a, a threat that's, you know, that's in Utah. And even though we haven't seen it in our area yet, we need to be aware of it and be proactive against it. One other thing that, that nationally is going around, and we've seen it here in Iron County, is fraud attempts, uh, where, uh, the fraudster calls people and tells them that they have a warrant for their arrest, and that they'll identify themselves. In fact, they've identified themselves as Lieutenant Dave Mitchell that used to work for the Sheriff's Office, that's now retired. But one of the things that, you know, we want people to understand is we never call people on the phone and tell them that they have a warrant for their arrest and that they need to go down to Walmart and buy gift cards to pay for their warrant. That is not how we operate. We do not do that. So if you ever receive a phone call that someone says, "This is Deputy Ken Carpenter, and you have a warrant for your arrest, and you need to run down to Walmart and buy gift cards to pay for it", that is an absolute fraud. Do not fall for it. Hang up on them, call us, let us know, and we'll do everything that we can. You know, they're, they're pretty difficult to, to track down, but, but if nothing else, we can stop them without any monetary loss to, to their potential victims. We never do, we never operate that way. If someone actually has a, has a warrant for their arrest, then we're, we're going to meet with them, uh, we'll talk to them. They have the opportunity of paying that warrant either at the court or at the jail. It's not paid any other way. It's either at the, at the courthouse or at the jail. So please be, please be aware of that. We want to make sure that everybody's kept safe from that. Jumping over to our youth homes, uh, again, if you go to the next slide, John. The second number was our numbers in July, last time I reported to you. The first number is our numbers year-to-date so far. And as you can see, there's, there's been some pretty significant increases. Assaults, fifty-nine. Of those fifty-nine, eight of them have been aggravated assaults, uh, very, very serious assaults, broken jaws, uh, people that have been grabbed by the hair, thrown down, kicked in the face, had hair torn from their scalp, uh, different things like that. You know, th- this is something, again, that our state legislators need to be keenly aware of. I think that they really need to seriously look at juvenile JRI and repeal it and go back to, uh, the law where we were before, where we're, where we were able to hold juveniles accountable for their serious offenses, because right now, unless it's a felony, we can't do a whole lot to hold them accountable. And it's really, really wreaking havoc in these, uh, youth homes. Uh, so far, uh, total hours of deputies this year, it's been six hundred and eighteen hours, specifically to youth homes, at a cost of forty-six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Those numbers aren't exactly accurate because we still have twelve cases that are outstanding, that are still under investigation, which are accruing more, uh, deputy hours. Uh, so far, that's fifteen point four or five weeks of a single deputy that would have been devoted to doing nothing but youth home cases. So that.
Ken, what, could we, um, what did you think about calling the owners of these youth homes in to have a meeting with them? And just sit down and say, "Look, guys, this is out of control"?
Well, they frankly don't care. They're making millions of dollars.
I know they are, and that's the point, is they, they need to pony up and provide security.
Well, that, here's the problem, Paul, is they're restricted by state law and by what they can and can't do. And a lot of these kids that are causing problems are placed by, uh, Utah courts or courts from other states into these youth homes. And it's DCFS that tells them what they can and can't do. And it's, it, it's creating a huge problem for us because they don't allow them to do anything other than, you know, very mild restraining holds. You know, uh, you know, we had a, I've told you this before, we've had a case where, uh, one of the, uh, a very serious aggravating assault was occurring on one of the, the male adults in one of these youth homes. He's just stepped back to try to defend himself, hit the kid one time with a closed fist, knocked the kid down. It stopped the, the violent assault that was taking place on him, and they fired him. They fired him for defending himself. You know, and I, I understand, it's a juvenile, but that juvenile was completely out of control. He was, you know, he was committing an aggravated assault on this man, and all he did was defend himself, and he lost his job for it. That's a problem with our judicial system. That's a problem with our state legislatures and, and the stance that they have taken on, uh, enforcing juvenile law.
At what point can we?
It's a problem with DCFS and their rules.
Say, we're, Reed and I see you, Reed and Brad are here, but at what point can we say we're done? We're, we're, we're full. We're not going to take in more youth homes. Can we legally do that?
Or, or can we pull a conditional use permit that's already been issued?
I, I would like, I, I mean, I, we, something, something needs to be done.
How do we address this?
You, you look at these stats and they're, they're alarming.
So we've started, uh, through the, the, uh, Children's Justice Center Advisory Board. This has been a, this is, this is kind of the project that we've taken on as that board with the sheriff, and sheriff sits on that board. Uh, so I've actually started getting, uh, some stats from juvenile justice, and I think I got some from the hospital the other day. We're going to work on this legislatively in the new legis, with the new legislative session. I don't, that's a tough one. I don't know that, I don't, I don't know what we're going to be able to do there. I think that we need to address these things moving forward with conditional use permits, uh, things like that, but I.
Can we do that? I mean, on that, can we say, as part of your conditional use permit, you have to provide your own security? Can we do that in, in the conditional use permit legally? I mean, what do you think, Mike? I mean, I don't know.
Well, the, well, and the problem is, and Ken touched it, I mean, even if they provide their own security, they're not allowed to do anything. They're not allowed to touch the kid, they're not allowed to restrain the kid. Like, there was a call the other night, and I don't remember where it was, I just was following it on the CAD. There was a violent assault taking place, and they were doing all that they could within their rights, within their power to restrain the kid, and it wasn't enough, so they were begging law enforcement to get there to provide more, uh, restrictive restraint. I mean, they, they can have their, their own security all day long, but they're not allowed to, they're not allowed to address it.
Then can we impose an impact fee to, to, to pay for, to help us with more laws, law enforcement?
You know, one of the things I'd like to know based on these statistics is which ones, which, we really essentially have three categories that we, we permit through the county. And so it'd be nice to know whether most of these are coming out of one of those categories, because we can only do a conditional use permit on one of the three, uh, and that is the residential, or excuse me, the rehabilitation treatment facility. So if it's, it's on our definition of our code, a rehabilitation treatment facility, that requires a conditional use permit. But if it's a residential facility for persons with disabilities, which is the smaller category, uh, that we don't regulate because they are under the Fair Housing Act, can have the same housing experience with someone with a disability in a home as somebody with a family. So we don't re- even review those, we don't even know if they're there or where they are. And so I don't know whether these are coming out of those facilities or, and then we had that, the, what we used to call group homes, which kind of fit in between a rehabilit- rehabilitation treatment facility and a residential facility per person with disability when we got sued before. And we come back to the numbers, and that would be like Moon Ridge Academy, and there are several that have twelve to sixteen people that are larger than what the, um, residential facility per person with disabilities allow for, which is the same as a family for unrelated people. And so they wouldn't allow us to use that same number. We kind of settled on twelve-ish. And so we, it's kind of been gone back and forth, uh, and it, so it depends on what kind they are. We can't set any kind of condition if we're not requiring a conditional use permit. And we can't require a conditional use permit if it's a residential facility for persons with disability. So when we said it's a school.
And that's like the Christmas model, or not to pick on them, but that's, right? That's a, that kind of business model where they can just set up shop?
Discovery Ranch, for example, is a, a resident, is a rehabilitation treatment facility. The, the one we had here at, up at Canyon Dry Lake, uh, was a rehabilitation treatment facility. Those we process through conditional use permit. The ones out west, Ascent Program, that's a one that we control through conditional use permit. So through those, we can review the conditional use permit and say, there were conditions in there that they had to abide by state laws and some of these things, and they couldn't have, uh, you know, juvenile offenders, they couldn't have, uh, you know, court adjudicated kids, they couldn't have certain types. And if those kids are in those programs, then we can look at their conditional use permit and revoke those permits if they're in violation of those.
Or can we say?
So, I guess that's why I'd like to know which programs are these coming out of, and if they're ones that we control through conditional use permit or review, then we can review those and see if they're in compliance or not.
Or, or maybe as a, as a condition, part of the condition of, condition of the conditional use permit is, can you charge a fee for service? I mean.
Yeah, and, and those are things that we could add. We could review the conditional use permit and say, these are not as presented. These are costing the county, you know, in these ways, and so we're going to have to do something different and levy a fee or do a, some kind of an assessment or something, and I think we could look at that.
Is there anything in Reed and the table of uses, or, that, that could be modified in terms of these types of homes? To, to restrict them at all?
Well, again, the rehabilitation treatment facility, if they fit under that category, then we can control it through the conditional use permit. And we reviewed those really closely to see what, what threshold we can then control under the, or, hey, using the road control, we can put conditions on their, their, uh, you know, operation. And then if it fits in that category, then we can. If it doesn't, and if, just under one of the Fair Housing Act things with a rehabilita- residential facility per person with disability, we can. Thanks, Reed.
Thanks, Reed. Sorry to interrupt, Ken. I just, seems like we gotta do something here, right?
Yeah, no, I agree. Uh, our current strength of patrol, we just had three graduate from post that are currently in FTO, we're potentially losing up to six, one of us already left for the US Marshal's Office. We got one that's, uh, probably going to be leaving for the Forest Service, two possibly going to Secret Service, one that just put in his, uh, his, uh, leave to go to St. George PD, um, and one that's gone into the private sector. We're looking at hiring three that are currently post-certified. Out of, out of those three, we had one that designed, decided to resend his application, one that's trying to figure out how to take such a large part, pay cut. He currently works for Henderson PD and wants to come back up here, but, you know, there's a substantial pay cut between Henderson and Iron County Sheriff's Office. We're currently down one that may need to fill, uh, eight positions by the first of the year. And so far this year, we've hired seven new deputies. So basically, we have replaced our, one half of our patrol deputies. You know, uh, pretty, pretty significant. With our K-9, uh, we replaced one drug, uh, patrol K-9 that will start being, uh, trained in January. And as I already said, our second explosive detection dog will start training in January as for, as well. Rest of that, you're already aware of, uh, just as far as just, uh, public information with the Sheriff's, uh, complex. We, the gel pods are complete, the footings have been poured on one pod and are currently being poured on the second pod. And they're pouring the tilt panels for the walls on the pods, and I think here, probably towards the end of the month, we'll start seeing some walls going up, out there. So the, the Sheriff's Complex is going forward. And, uh, are there any questions at all?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Shalon begged off, she's off with family this week, so she would normally also present.
Right. Um, Commissioner Blake, you want to go?
Sure, I'll cut her run through this really quick. Uh, we met as a Southern Utah Executive Committee for Economic Development, uh, a group that really tries to encourage and recruit economic development throughout the region. Uh, we meet monthly. Uh, we've met on, on the jail construction, uh, met with the, uh, with the Airport Board. Uh, spent some time with Terry and the Building Department, uh, looking at some new projects, new subdivisions, uh, just some of the issues, uh, with building in the county, touring around and looked at some new projects. Uh, I've looked at a couple of, uh, nuisance land issues that, uh, we're aware of and are being handled by our code enforcement, uh, and the Building Department, and, uh, making headway on some of those things. Uh, I met with Perron City Administration, uh, to discuss fire issues. Had a meeting with Maria and Sam, uh, just to talk about our ongoing contract negotiations with SCU for their athletic department. Um, I've had several meetings, working on our EMS and air ambulance coverage. I want to throw out a, a thanks to Josh in the IT Department. He's been really helpful in helping me mine, uh, mine some data out of our, our, out of our databases to, to kind of complete that picture. Josh has put in a significant amount of time. I appreciate him for that. Uh, I intended, I attended the Wildlife Urban Interface Meeting, public meeting, uh, George Coulson was there, uh, from the county. I think we had a representation from all of the fire departments and some folks, uh, within the county, uh, some citizens that could be affected by that. This was the public meeting to kind of tell us everything that was going on, and they still don't have the rules, and they still don't have the map. So we still don't have a definitive answer as to what this looks like.
But yeah, we're supposed to implement it in January?
Yeah, we, we're supposed to implement it January first. I'm not willing to implement anything until we know what we're implementing.
Yeah, right.
So-
Gotta pass it before we know what we're gonna implement, Mike, that's-
I know. It's, yeah, it seems like putting the cart before the horse, but-
Yes.
No, we've had, I mean, it's just been ongoing conversations, and we're still not, we're, we're, we're just still not there. I expected to see big pictures of maps and let's have a discussion of- Yeah, no, no map.
At the CWP meeting, that was, that was, we, we don't, there's not much we can do until we have a map.
That wasn't the CWP, that was-
Yeah, no, it was a different meeting.
Yeah, that was a different meeting, that was, no, the, but, uh, I mean, we, George and I, uh, pulled some of their folks and just, and kind of had a private meeting in the back to talk about what was happening, and they've run into some difficulties they're working through. But yeah, no, we were, we were told in no uncertain terms that we will need to implement this by January first, but, like, well, we're, I'm not willing to implement anything until we know what we're implementing, so, as well as see how that, see how that turns out. Uh, had the, uh, Tourism Board grant presentations, uh, we did, that took all day the other day. Um, those aren't the numbers that you saw here today, that was from restaurant taxes, so there'll be similar numbers that come from the tourism tax. Um, I met with Dan and Hewitt at State Fire, uh, to talk about some, uh, personnel issues and coverage, uh, on, uh, for some projects through the winter. Have an employee that basically, uh, by description kind of gets laid off through the winter, um, in the past, that hasn't happened. Long story short, uh, we can keep this employee on, the, the county will need to, the county will need to pay salary through the, kind of the winter months, but it all goes against PC match. So I told them that I didn't see a problem with that. We're, we either have to pay it in PC match, or we pay to, to, to keep this employee on, you know, from now till April, basically, and, uh, it's gonna cost us the same either way. And, and, and that's how they've done it, that's, that's how we've always done it. Um, I don't know what the glitch was this time. I do, but it's, there's some management issues that, but we've straightened that out, and kind of gone back to the way that we've done it to keep this young man employed through the winter. I met with R Plus Energy, uh, they're the energy company responsible for Apalusa One and Two Solar Projects. Uh, they did a kind of really good overall, uh, review of their sites, their programs. Uh, we toured Apalusa One and looked at where Apalusa Two is going to go. And if you remember, in Apalusa Two, the difference there is we apprec- we approved, uh, battery storage in that, which will be, that's really a cool thing. It's kind of complicated, I've asked them to come back after the first of the year, uh, and present everything to us here in commission meeting. That'll just be a good review of, of, uh, of what's going on there. And then Friday, I met with Luke and Nicole, um, with a, a company that's interested in locating here, uh, that are interested in using the MIDA, sis- the MIDA program. MIDA is basically the same thing as the Utah Inland Port, it's a, it's a state agency, but it, uh, it, it, it provides funding and, and everything that the inland port does, except for military programs, military, uh, military projects. Um, there was some, you know, just some questions that, that we had and Nicole and Luke had moving forward. Um, so this is, we had this on the agenda last commission meeting and then pulled it. Basically, we as the commission need to do a resolution just to be able to open talks with, uh, MIDA with this project, and we weren't quite ready. Um, I hope that we can probably have that on our final commission meeting this year. That's just a resolution to talk, that there's no, we don't commit to anything at that point. But it's a pretty exciting project, they're looking at using, uh, both MIDA and the inland port, uh, project areas for their project, and, uh, pretty encouraged about that. That's it in a nutshell.
Thank you. Ken?
Okay, I was, unfortunately, I've been out of the county for most of the last two weeks, um, but I was able to listen in on the CWPP meeting. And same frustrations that were expressed by Mike are, are relevant in that meeting. We don't know, they don't know what they're doing yet, so it, it puts us in a hard spot. But that, that's the only meeting I was able to attend. I missed all the festivities at, uh, the Heritage Center, the different meetings that went on there, so, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I have a few things, um, I met with Cedar City in the, we've got a, that special board set up. Um, Cedar City is combining with the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District, they'll have their own water system, water department, but they're basically, uh, turning over the exploration, the development of water resources, um, enzyme engineering was there, they presented a plan to, a lot of the problem that Cedar City has right now is the pressures they face coming into town. When they're pumping water from the Quichapah water basin to get the water up to those tanks up on the high hills like Home Depot and Cross Hollow, the head pressure, I think the pressure in some of those lines is approaching two hundred and fifty to two hundred and eighty PSI. It's extremely dangerous, um, for, for an employee, if they were down in one of those vaults and something happened, it, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be good, and so it's very dangerous. The other thing is it puts a lot of pressure and wear and tear on our, on, not our, but the Cedar City's, uh, pumps there. And so there's a lot of talk about, uh, the Central Iron County Water Conservancy Dist- District just finished a water tank, uh, which will help, uh, they're talking about some booster pumps and tying in the systems, there's a lot of positive things happening with water in, in that, uh, in that forum, and, and it's exciting to see that, uh, that happen. I think it's gonna be a really positive move forward. I know that Parowan is, is, I think they've, it looks, I drove up to Canyon today, and it looks like they've got their pipe laid for their, their recharge project, which they got money from the state for, and that, and they'll, they'll be using the gravel pit that's, that all, is owned by, uh, Iron County, they're, um, just, um, just north of the fairgrounds. And, and that'll be exciting for them to have that, uh, that recharge project going and working. Um, uh, had our, my Southwest Behavioral Health Board meeting this last, uh, this, this last week. We had an increase, a slight increase, uh, that I forwarded to Luke, our auditor, to, uh, apply to our next year's budget. That, that fee that we pay as a county is based solely on population numbers, um. For that, we also had our steering committee meeting, that steering committee is made up of, of a, a mayor from each county, a county commissioner from each county, and a school board member from each county. And we talked about the different things that's going on in the five county. Our, Darren Bushman, who we hired as the director of Five Counties Association of Governments, doing, is doing an amazing job, cutting costs, looking at leases that we can get out of, uh, just, just trimming, and, uh, I can't say enough good about what, what Darren Bushman is doing for us as a new CEO of that, of that board, of that, uh, organization. I walk the, usually Sunday mornings on board, so I go down and, and walk the site at the new jail. It's, it's really fun to walk around and look at how they, how, they, they do the things there, the, uh, how they pour those, Ken mentioned they're doing the tilt panels, they poured some of those, and watching how they form those, and being in construction, it's really fascinating to, to watch that process. There's a lot of steel in that, that project, a lot of rebar. Uh, some of those panels are so full of rebar, it's hard to believe there's enough room for concrete to go in them. But I, I guess it's not so much for security, it's to lift those big heavy panels up so they don't buckle, and, and, uh, but it's, it's moving along, and it'll be exciting to see that project go vertical soon. Uh, I know they have had a couple rain delays, and, and I, I work with Leighton on, on some of the change orders, some of the different things, um, um, but it's moving along, and, and they're doing a good job for us. And that's, uh, I think that's all I pretty much have. Um, right now, let's see, it's, we're running a little late, um, can't see that clock, it's twenty after. Um, let's take a ten-minute break, and we'll resume this meeting at ten thirty.
I was just telling him.
Nice to see you this morning. Just kidding.
That was the land transfer one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm ready, Commissioner, whenever you are.
All right, I think we're ready to go with our 10 o'clock meeting, which is about 38 minutes late, but we're gonna move forward. We'll start with our agenda, item number one, public hearing discussion on possible approval of a proposed agriculture protection area according to provisions of Utah Code 17-41 for approximately 105.1, or .51 acres located on five parcels generally located on 4,100 West between 3,200 North and 4,000 North. Applicant is Clark and Ruth Webster. Brett?
All right, good morning Commissioners. So we already, you already mentioned the location there on 4,000 North and 4,100 West generally. So it's split up between two different sections, so you've got the one section up here on 4,000 North and 4,100 West and then you've got another chunk bisected there by 4,100 West and about on 3,200 North. So again, all in total about the 105.5 acres. The zoning on the property, you've got rural agricultural on the majority of it and then one of the pieces is A20, Agricultural 20. You can see all the different acreages there. You've got again about 46 acres at the northern portion and then the remainder at the southern end there. So I guess while we're on this slide two, as far as, you know, actually maybe we'll go ahead and into some of the other sections before I jump into it, but. So obviously with the state code, interestingly enough, actually just changed this month, so just a couple weeks ago, they renumbered everything, so it used to be Code Section 1741, it's now 1781 and they've made some revisions and some provisions, so that's always fun to see what the new things are that are surprises. But generally speaking, it stayed mostly the same, so we're gonna hit mostly on these two sections, the proposal and approval of the protection area and protection of land in the protection area, so those are the two focus areas. So first one being what are the protections for a landowner in an ag protection area? And we're gonna kinda just look through these main sections, limitations on local regulations, nuisances and eminent domain restrictions. So being part of an agriculture protection area, there are regulations that, you know, we would not be able to unreasonably restrict a farm structure or a farm practice for anything in the ag protection area. We wouldn't be able to change the zoning designation with, essentially without their consent. For public nuisance, generally speaking, it just classifies them as, we can't classify any of the agricultural operations as being a nuisance. So there's those added protections for the property owner when it comes to that for, especially with development, you know, getting closer and closer to the agricultural areas, it provides that added protection for them, you know, to not have those complaints come in or different legal cases, it kinda, the code speaks to all of that. And then regarding eminent domain, basically exercising domain powers may not condemn for any purpose any land within an agricultural protection area that is being used for agricultural production. There is a process that, you know, that's outlined in that 1781-305 that does talk about basically a revised process that has to happen for eminent domain and that it changes being in a protection area. And then some additional state code provisions, basically we'll walk through the criteria that's evaluated. There's basically five criteria that's evaluated on, you know, the commission to determine whether or not we want to accept the proposal to have the property be in an agricultural protection area. So this is just outlining the process that we've gone through thus far, just the different noticing that we've done, mailings that we've done, we've gone through the Agricultural Protection Area Advisory Board, we've gone to the Planning Commission meeting, those both happened, well actually the Ag Protection Meeting we had in October, Planning Commission was just this, earlier this month. Both of them did recommend approval of the Ag Protection Area for the Clark and Ruth Webster proposal and then we're here today at the public hearing. So these are the five criteria that are outlined in state code for the evaluations on, on whether or not to, you know, to accept the proposal first being, and actually we'll go through each one. So the criteria, whether or not the land is currently being used for agricultural use, the answer for that is yes, they've got several different agricultural operations amongst the 105 acres, alfalfa production, forage, lambing sheds, sheep corrals, crop storage. And then the second criteria, whether or not the land is currently zoned for agricultural use and as we mentioned, it is Agricultural 20 acre and Rural Agricultural 20, so it meets that criteria as well. Whether or not the land is viable for agricultural use and yes on that, the land has been in agricultural use for, for significant amount of time. You know, there's been a lot of infrastructural improvements put on the property related to agricultural and so there's sufficient room for those operations to continue as well. Fourth, the extent and nature of existing or proposed agricultural improvements, so as was mentioned, all of the improvements that they've put onto the property, it's, you know, it's not just vacant land that they're not doing anything with, they have put, you know, a significant amount of, of infrastructure in to help, to help those agricultural operations flourish. And fifth, what are the anticipated trends in agricultural use and technological conditions? So there's obviously a continued demand for lamb and wool production and sheep feeding as well as, you know, there's always continued increase in technology when it comes to efficient sprinkler and irrigation systems as we talked about at the, the last meeting. So those are the five criteria that are evaluated, we feel like they've, they've met those, both the Agriculture Advisory Board and the Planning Commission felt the same way. So one of the things that's in the state code as well, it does allow when we send out these notices to property owners within a thousand feet of the proposed agriculture protection area, it does allow them to essentially make a request to include their property in the agricultural protection area as well. So we did receive one request from an adjacent property owner, the Sherrett family, to include their about 118 acres between these two parcels here, it's just south of that northern one at 4,000 North and 4,100 West. So we've looked at this, we've met with the property owner as well, with, with Paul Sherrett and just kinda walked through, you know, from, from staff's perspective, we feel like it would be better. This line that you see here, that's the Cedar Valley Belt Route and so what we've talked through with the owner is, you know, we'd be happy, I think, to process and go through an agricultural protection area proposal, but probably as a separate application, so after, you know, we can go through the road dedication process with them and then afterwards, you know, they could come in for further own application for, for an agriculture protection area. So that would be our recommendation is to, to not include it in this proposal for the Ag Protection Area, but to have the, the Clark and Ruth Webster proposal go through separately and then if, if after we go through the process of getting that road dedication done, you know, they wanted to submit an application, we'd be happy to, to take them through that process and I think it would be, be good for that property. So again, as was mentioned already, the Advisory Board and Planning Commission did, did recommend approval of the Clark and Ruth Webster proposal, the 105.51 acres, the property shown here. So that, that concludes the presentation, if there's not any questions for us, we could jump into the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the Chair will declare the public hearing open, if you would like to speak on this topic, if you'd approach the mic and state your name and be brief.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Robert Ballou, Bob, works for me. I live in Cedar City, I have, I've done so for six and a piece years with my wife of 57 years now, next month. It's the 12th home for us in the United States, from California to New Jersey to Minnesota to Texas and back to California and time to go to Nevada and back to Utah. We, we love it. We've seen in all of our travels how growth is managed in all of those cities, the good, the bad and the ugly, some worse than others. But coming here, we've observed in the last six piece years, the growing residential development in the Cedar Valley and been a little concerned about it. Couple of years ago, I heard about Vision Iron County and I got involved with them and their Parks Recreation and Open Space Team, commonly called PROS. And the PROS team mission is to listen to residents' PROS concerns and share those wants and needs and desires with civic and government leaders. And I'm speaking as an individual, I'm not officially representing Vision Iron County today, though I bring my experience with them to the lectern. I became aware of Webster's petition in October and I wanna thank your clerk for posting the agendas the way they are posted. So I became aware of this, of it and I went out and viewed the area from my truck as well as from Google Earth and I noted nearby residential development and the encroachment that's coming. So I researched the agricultural petition area law online prior to November 6th, so my information in my head at least might be a little out of date, but. And then I read a family history of the Webster family in the American Sheep Industry Association Magazine and covered not only that family but several others and the importance of the sheep industry in Iron County. And I was, so I'm encouraged to support the Webster's petition for an Ag Protection Area, I'm glad that the various bodies have done the same, but local fresh lamb production now, but what about the future? Plans unknown. Wow, what could that be? Maybe if the family were willing, the potential for an Iron County suburban park. There's a bunch of money available from the Land and Water Conservation Act Grants and I just heard about a lot of it last week at Department Outdoor Recreation Grants Meeting. There is, and overall to wrap up, a great need for walking distance parks and open space in our suburbs. Kids and families need nearby parks and open spaces for play and fun. So I encourage, I would encourage all ag owners to consider protection areas. They just might be future family legacy parks. What a way to be remembered. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Any others like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. And is there any wrap up, Brett, or just?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I did receive a call from a neighbor as well, just that's adjacent to this, they've got a 10 acre piece, they were just inquiring. They were in support of it, sounded like they wanted to maybe submit an application as well, so I think it's one of those things that when you have those applications come out and people learn about, you know, the different opportunities that they have available, they just are curious and I think are interested. So I think it's a, a good program that I think a lot of people out there may be interested in doing as well.
So my understanding is this protects the ag folks if they wanted to set up a feedlot on that property or do with it what they want?
Yeah.
They could.
Yeah, so the definition of...
Without complaints from other neighbors.
Yeah.
Oh, but I said that wrong. Without having them affect them, but, okay.
Yeah, so that and...
You've been around too long then.
It's good for, it's good for 20 years and so after that 20 years, it can be re-reviewed and it can be modified, it can be changed and updated, but it is good for a minimum of 20 years and the owner has the ability at any time, if they want to remove their property from the Ag Protection Area, they have that ability as well.
Interesting.
Was there any concern about the, securing the belt route rights away in any of that? Or is that...
Not for any of the Clark and Ruth Webster properties, so they are adjacent to, to one, if I can get the arrows on here. So the property adjacent to this one, to the west, that did have some belt route that the county actually went through the process to acquire that portion through there, but no other, that was the one reason why on the, the request here, because of the belt route going through there, staff did have concern with, with that piece.
Brett, she was trying to get a picture, I think, of one of those slides. You wanna go back, we can go back one.
Yeah.
Also, this is streamed on YouTube, so you can grab a screenshot there too if you need, so.
Do we need, Brett, when we make a motion on this, do we need to cite that new code, 17.81 instead of 7.81?
It would probably be better yet to cite the new 1781 code.
The reordering of Title 17 is...
And we're okay doing that with the agenda listed as it says is? We're okay with that? Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion on this?
No.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agriculture protection area according to provisions of Utah Code 17-81 for approximately 105.51 acres located on five parcels generally located on 4,100 West between 3,200 North and 4,000 North.
Second.
Got moved to second on all the favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Aye, motion carries. Thank you. We'll go to number two, public hearing discussion and possible approval for disposal of of parcels of real par property. APN D dash ten twenty four dash five dash one and APN D dash ten twenty four dash five dash two. John?
Those APNs are in Cedar Highlands. Um these are two parcels that Iron County acquired not by our desire. They were acquired uh by the town of Cedar Highlands, which has since dissolved. Um the intent was to um improve or modify the the Cedar Highlands Road.
Was to reduce the the grade.
Grade.
The grade, right?
Yeah. Anyway, that project uh was was scrapped. Um and so uh with the commission's approval, I went ahead and listed those, but that was uh almost eighteen months ago. Um we got appraisals um totaling, one lot was appraised at one forty five and one was praised at one eleven. I think uh a year plus on the market kind of showed that those were those values probably weren't what the actual value was. We actually had several offers. We had one offer fall through and we actually ended up getting earnest money. Um the money for the sale of these, the proceeds will go not to the county budget but to the corridor preservation fund because that's what they were purchased with. And so uh in negotiations, um there was someone who kind of made us a lowball offer and I I countered and said, well, if you'll give us a hundred and sixty for both, just so that we can be out from under them, we'll take it. And I've I've kind of quietly visited with the commissioners about that. Um so basically we went from one forty five and one eleven to eighty for each of those. Um so a bit less than the original praised value. Um we did get some earnest money from a sale that fell through, uh but yeah, that's that's pretty much it. We used a Realtor um and we made proper notice of of this so that we have to have the public hearing now. Um and if if the commissioners approve it, then we'll probably close on that this week.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Chair will declare this public hearing open. If you'd like to speak to this, if you'd approach the mic and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and uh go to a vote.
All right, I'd move for approval uh for disposal of parcels of real property in the APN as described for the price, I guess, of eighty thousand dollars per piece of property for a total of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. To return to the corridor preservation fund.
Second that motion? And John, just real quick, just to clarify, the earnest money will go to the corridor preservation fund as well?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Luke, could you speak to that? I can't, is that what happened?
Yeah, that's all right.
It was in the past, so I couldn't remember which fund that ended up.
That'll go back, okay.
It did go into the corridor.
It's been moved in second in all the favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, public hearing regarding the two thousand twenty six proposed final budget. Luke?
This one yours? Is that yours too, Brett? Okay, good morning. Um so today I'm going to do a presentation on the two thousand twenty six proposed budget. Um there won't be any vote until next commission meeting. Um but if you guys have any comments or anything to add, you guys were really very involved in this process. If you have any anything to add throughout the presentation, um feel free. So it'll be about twenty minutes to cover a hundred and thirty six million dollar budget. Um so bear with me here. Um, okay, first I'd like to show uh this graph of the inflation rate, just how that has changed over the last few years. Um because inflation and the state of the economy can affect a lot of areas in our budget. Um over the last year, inflation has remained around three percent. Uh the revenue received from sales tax is affected by this. Expenses that departments have for supplies and materials um is affected. And then also the cost of living increases are also affected um by inflation. Um looking at another graph that also speaks to inflation, uh this is the Consumer Price Index. Uh this follows a specific measure of inflation that tracks the average price change in a basket of goods and services purchased by consumers. So if you look back in two thousand sixteen for that specific, um those specific goods and services, it costs around two hundred and forty dollars. And now in two thousand twenty five, that's up to three hundred and twenty dollars. So you you can see during those years after COVID from two thousand twenty to twenty three, that really steep increase. It's kind of leveled out a little bit since then, but we're still not back to the levels that we were from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty. So hopefully we can get back down to uh that lower inflation soon. Now looking at uh sales tax. So this is our last five years of our sales tax revenue. And kind of comparing this to the inflation graph. Um if you look at twenty one to twenty two, how there was quite a bit more of an increase than the other years. Uh that was when inflation was at its peak. Um since then, it's kind of come down, but there have been steady um increases continuing on. Uh we do have a few more payments to receive for two thousand twenty five. But that amount for two thousand twenty five is what is projected um through the end of this year. Which is going to be about two hundred thousand more than what we had budgeted. Uh this shows the strength of the economy in Iron County and the growth that we are continuing to have. The green is what is being budgeted for two thousand twenty six. With inflation coming down a little bit more recently, it has a direct impact on that revenue. And that's why we're budgeting um not as much of an increase as we had the year before. But still some increase. Um also comparing home values. So this is average uh home value price in Utah. Uh the last year and a half, two years, it has uh leveled out from the big spike we had. Um the assessor's office, their average value with homes in the county was four hundred and thirty one thousand this year. Uh some of our other revenue that fluctuates from year to year is our recording fees. Again, looking back four or five years ago, you can see when homes were selling, you know, they were on the market for one or two days and selling and land was selling. Um our recording fees spiked. Since then, the last three years, it's come back down to average. Um so around five to six hundred thousand is about our average. And for next year, we're budgeting five hundred and fifty thousand. Our building permits. Um that that revenue source is pretty hard to predict. It depends a lot on commercial projects that are going on in the county. Um in two thousand twenty four, we had a lot of solar battery projects that were completed that year. That's why the revenue was so high. And then compared to two thousand twenty three, um it was only a third of two thousand twenty four. Um there weren't near as many commercial projects, more just residential building. So for next year, we're budgeting eight hundred and fifty thousand in building permit revenue. Okay, looking at the debt that the county has, uh there was no new additional debt in two thousand twenty five. Um the top uh bond is the public safety building. That is leased to the state, so we receive rent from them that pays for this bond. Um the Shakespeare Theater Bond, that is paid from our tourism tax. Maria spoke about that earlier this morning. Um our our TRT and then our restaurant tax, they each pay half of that bond. And we are ac- actually budgeting to pay that off next year. So it'll be a couple of years early um to get that bond paid off. We'll use some of the savings from those those uh tourism taxes to pay that off early. And then the Sheriff's Complex bond that was new in two thousand twenty four. That's paid for with sales tax and the the public safety self sales tax is projected to come in about three hundred thousand dollars higher in two thousand twenty five than the amount required for the bond payment. Which is good because that payment increase is two to three percent every year. So in case of a down year, we would have some buffer there to make the payment. And then eventually those additional funds could be used to pay off the bond early.
So you, Luke, you put that excess into a fund to cover if it fluctuates?
Yeah, we have a a debt service fund that that revenue goes into. And so it's all staying in that fund. Um building up, we'll make the payment each year. And then our sales tax so far, the last year and a half since it started, has been enough to make that payment plus some. So it'll stay in that fund, being saved, earning interest to help eventually pay that off early or in case of a down year, we'll have, we'll have those funds there to help. Um looking at the capital expenses that were um proposed this year, so just talked about the Sheriff's Complex and jail, uh that continues to be constructed. It will continue all through two thousand twenty six. Um the projected finish date is summer of two thousand twenty seven. Um the Sheriff's Office proposed to replace their SWAT vehicles. Um they have two, what they call MRAP vehicles right now. They are proposing to replace them with new vehicles that are called Bearcats. They take about eighteen months to be built. Um so there isn't anything included in the twenty six budget. But we have to go ahead and order one of those now. Uh and that will be proposed in the two thousand twenty seven budget. In the road department, um with their equipment, they want to trade in one of their blades that they have now for a new one. Um buy a mechanical vacuum broom, a distributor truck and a message board. In the landfill, they're proposing a skid steer and trailer, a water stand and tank. Especially over the last year, they've had a lot of fires. Um so they're proposing that to help with those fires. Some Conex boxes and a gate and camera for the burrow landfill site. And then council on aging. Um currently, they have two older buses that have the bigger, taller stairs to get up into them. They've had a few uh senior citizens that have had problems getting in and out of that. Um scraping their knees, getting hurt. So we're proposing some more uh functional transit vans that would help accomplish that. And then in the building and grounds, uh in the Justice Center, they've done some work this year, but going into next year, finish doing the retaining wall and zerscaping the around the Justice Center in Cedar. Um replacing the handrails at the courthouse and visitor center. Um adding a mini split and AC and HVAC controls in the public safety building. So not a lot of big projects going on um with building and grounds, except for the new Sheriff's Complex. Okay, looking at salary and wages, I wanted to give a little bit of a history on this, um since the stepping grade was implemented. Um that was done in July of two thousand twenty two. Um and then kind of show where we're we're going from now and into the future. So when that was implemented, um there was no um COLA or the first step wasn't giving, given until January of two thousand twenty four. So no uh wage changes in two thousand twenty three. In two thousand twenty four, there was a five percent COLA, which is a cost of living adjustment. And the stepping grade. In two thousand twenty five, um we had a lot of other increases. Um our insurance and other costs go up. So there was just a one percent COLA approved with the stepping grade. Um we also implemented um an adjustment to any full-time employees. So within the stepping grade, um we had some full-time employees that were at a grade two. We moved all full-time employees up to a grade three, which each grade change is five percent. Um so they got moved up to a grade three and then it was implemented to add an administrative assistant, one, two, and three position. So after four years of someone being in a position, they can move up to an administrative assistant two, which would move them up a grade and then up to a three eventually. Um just to build a kind of a career path and growth and into the future. Um so now looking at the proposal for two thousand twenty six. In the budget, there's a five percent cost of living plus the stepping grade. Um we also looked at a bunch of different departments and positions um to restructure um to incentivize employees to get licensed or certified if required in their department. And just to give an example on this and kind of what it means. So when the stepping grade was set up, um obviously there were, there were a lot of changes. It was a big financial impact to the county. It wasn't perfect. I mean, it's still probably probably not going to be perfect. But like in the Sheriff's Department, they have so they have a deputy one position, deputy two, deputy three. So they hire someone that starts, has to go to post, get certified. And then once they meet so many qualifications, they move up to deputy two. And then further qualifications, then they could go up to deputy three. Or if they were going to hire someone from a different department that was already certified, they don't have to bring them in at a deputy one. Um they can bring them in at a deputy two. So in the building department, currently, we have one position that's called a building inspector. And whether that person's certified or not, certified residential or commercial, it doesn't really matter. They're kind of set within that um stepping grade. So adding a building inspector, one, two, and three position would allow someone that gets hired, say, to building inspector one, doesn't have the experience or certifications. Once they get those certifications for a residential inspector, they can move up to a building inspector two. And then once they get their commercial certifications, they can move up to a building inspector three. And then, I mean, usually we can't hire people like that are certified, bringing them in, say, just a building inspector one. It gives us more options to bring in people that um could be certified. So we added that in a couple of different departments. Um it was already in several departments. So there were a few other adjustments within the stepping grade system. Each each grade is is unique for each department throughout the county. Each department has a different number of positions, type of positions, and required qualifications. So the goal this year was to update the update all of these changes as best as possible to avoid adjustments in the future. Um we closely reviewed each department and how it was set up, considered what was working with some departments and changes that need needed to be made in other departments. Um the adjustments made this year will hopefully solve these challenges that have arose since the stepping grade was implemented. Um each year, we've usually had a some adjustments that we've we've made. The perfect plan is to only have a cost of living adjustment and the stepping grade adjustment each year. Um no other adjustments to specific positions. And like I said, I know it wasn't perfect before, and it probably still isn't going to be perfect, but hopefully we're closer to that target. Within the county, we had twenty seven new position requests. Um I'm going to go over a few that are being proposed in the budget. In the council on aging department, um these aren't brand new positions, but they are increasing the hours safer. They're ten hours as a part-time position, going up to twenty hours per week for a couple of positions. In the IT department, um adding a GIS position. And adding a network administrator of security mid-year. So adding one at the start of the year and then waiting to have that security position mid-year. Um in the emergency management department, adding a community wildfire specialist position. Um, in the Emergency Management Department, adding a community wildfire specialist position. In the Building Department, currently we have a part-time administrative assistant. It's being proposed to change that to full-time. And that would also assist with the planning and zoning department. Um, and then Engineer Department, adding another person to the sign shop. In the Sheriff's Department, adding three new patrol uh, positions. In the jail, adding eight new deputy one positions, two per quarter. So two, starting in January, two in April and so on throughout the year, um, so eight total. And in the DMV, one part-time position. So those are all the positions that are included in this proposed budget. Other significant impacts on the budget. Next year will be our final payment repayment for the CJC Voca Grant seventy two thousand. Um, we have been working on doing a capital facilities plan. Um, that will start partially this year, but mostly be funded out of next year's budget. To review the storm drain, um, sewer and transportation. And that capital facilities plan has been something that's been discussed for a long time. Um, it is required in order to create and update the impact fee facilities plan. Which is required with the sewer impact fees that we collect. Uh, so getting that study done and that updated.
Luke, is that going to be paid out of the general fund?
Yeah.
Not out of the impact fees?
We can pay a portion so that with the capital facilities plan, they will do an impact fee facilities plan as well. So that portion we can pay out of impact fees, but it's pretty minimal, it's like twenty thousand. Um, another big impact we have this year was insurance increase of three hundred and sixteen thousand. Um, in the past, the county was self-insured. Um, and we did have some savings from that. We have an insurance committee that's made up of several. Uh, members throughout the county from each department and they met and they. Propose that we use two hundred thousand of that prior savings to go towards the insurance increase. To help offset costs for the budget next year. And then looking back or looking to this year, two thousand and twenty five. Just like to look at and see where we're ending, um. I did mention earlier about the inflation rate going down a little bit. Uh, Utah unemployment rate remains low, we're below the national average, which can make it hard to. Uh, keep departments filled and hire people. Interest rates coming down the last few months, will have a. Pretty big effect on our budget because we earn a lot of money on on our savings, so as those rates come down, we'll earn less interest. Um, we had a general fund property tax increase that was voted on last year that took effect this year in two thousand and twenty five. Um, the general fund balance and the municipal services fund balance both increased at the end of two thousand and twenty four. Part of that was due to uh, one-time payments towards the end of the year. But overall, the economy in Iron County remains strong and the county is financially stable. I also like to look at this chart, it's kind of hard to see, but. There's a study done by the Utah Taxpayers Association every year, um. So this just came out a few weeks ago. And so they look at every county in the state and they compare. So that second column over, it says revenue from taxes and fees per capita. And Iron County is ranked sixth lowest in that study. And then the. Column next to that to the right says revenue from taxes and fees per thousand dollar of resident income. And Iron County is ranked seventh lowest on that. So a direct comparison to other counties and this is on the Utah Taxpayers Association website, if anyone. Wants to look at that further. Other than that, do you guys have anything to add into the budget process? I want to thank all the department heads, I know it's a. Long process and some long days for you guys meeting, but if there's anything you want to add.
I thank you for you in your office. But also I think, I mean, overall. Um, in our budget meetings with all of the departments, I think. This year more than some others, i- in my mind, a lot of those uh, requests were. Were very conservative and. Uh, I think everybody's kind of on the team. The the team player as far as keeping our budget conservative, uh, using our taxes wisely. I just want to kind of thank all of our departments, uh, everybody's, everybody was really good this year. Uh, I think overall this year, uh, I really think our employees are the winners. We're we're still three percent below the Consumer Price Index as far as. Cost of living, but we're way closer than we were, so. Yeah, I just want to thank everybody's, everybody's participation and uh, hard work. I think it's it's good to come out and hear that kind of a report.
I'd like to echo that and thank everybody that participated, it's a grueling process. It's uh, it's not always fun, we don't have a money tree, we should wish we did sometimes, but. Uh, we do the best with what we can, I think it's important for the public to know that Iron County itself. Gets about ten percent of the pie, I think that when you send out tax notices and we collect the taxes that. That it's important that they know that we we get ten percent of that, I mean, there's other, you know, school district, water district, other entities within the county that. That we collect the money for and then distribute that money out, so. Sometimes I think there's a misunderstanding of of what we get as a county, so.
Right, for sure. Okay.
Thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, thanks Luke. You guys, you can go to public hearing if. From there.
All right, so the Chair, even though we're not going to vote on anything today, the Chair will declare the old, the public meeting or public hearing open. If anybody'd like to address this budget issue, if you'd come to the mic and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and and uh, we'll look forward to a vote next commission meeting on this budget, thank you. Appreciate it Luke, uh, number four, public hearing regarding a compensation increase for executive county officers.
Sorry, John, can I pull up another?
I'm so sorry, I switched too soon.
Okay, so this is a separate public hearing that we have to have on pay for executive county officers, um. This in Utah Code seventeen dash sixty-six dash four oh one. Um, like Brett was saying, Code seventeen was updated, so these uh, sections have changed since last year, they did change a little bit of the wording as well. Um, so who is an executive county officer? So basically what this code says is annual salaries of county officers shall be set by their respective county legislative bodies. An executive county officer means an individual who is the head or chief of a county department or division. An individual who is the chief assistant or deputy of an individual described in the section above. So basically any department head or their assistant, any elected official or their chief deputy. What is required, so before the legislative body may adopt a final budget with. Um, a compensation increase, we have to hold a public hearing. Um, publish the notice which has been done. And then a public hearing uh, shall be held separate from any other public hearing. And may be held the same day as another public hearing, including immediately before or after the other public hearing. So that's why we're doing this one separate, um, on its own. So here's a list of all of the executive county officer positions within the county. And the percent of increase for next year. Um, a lot of these are are at six point six percent. Um, which is the five percent cost of living plus the step. Some of these are at five percent, which is only the cost of living. Because they're maxed out on the stepping grade system. So after so many years, the stepping grade system ends, if you're maxed out, um, the next year you only get the cost of living adjustment. And then there are some adjustments that are above the six point six percent. As I talked about in the budget public hearing, we reviewed the stepping grade and made changes to departments where there were. Were problems or questions in the past, um, and then where we also added. The increase or adjustment for those people to get licensed, for those incentives, some of these are due to that as well. So that's everything I have there, if we want to go to the public hearing.
All right, um, so on item number four, Chair declares a public hearing open. If there's anybody'd like to speak to this issue.
Commissioner, I would.
You would like to?
Yeah. Um, I have only an observation to make, having been around this process for a few years and. Been privy to salaries of um, commissioners or council members uh, throughout the the state. There is a wide range of salaries for uh, commissioners and council members, there's different forms of government, so the titles are different, but it's the same. Same job, um, and uh, I. I believe that in third-class counties, we're probably not competitive with commissioner salaries. Um, I also understand why, it is a very politically fraught route move to make, to give, to vote to give yourself a raise. Um, sometimes you'll see a commissioner do it on the way out the door. Uh, but I I know that compared to similar counties such as um, Box Elder or Toowilla. Or Yewinta, um, I believe. Uh, you all are paying yourselves far less than than your county parts, so. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I know that that's that's the trend, that's all I have to say.
I I don't have a solution either, right, that. I'm not saying to do anything different, I'm just, I just want to put that out there into the ether.
Thank you, John.
I I haven't missed any meals. I mean, I I and and none of us here are full-time commissioners, we, I mean, our our. Our job is classified as a part-time job, uh, we all hold outside employment, you know, if if. If it ever got to a point where the county required full-time commissioning, then that would have to be addressed, but. You know, it's. We've always, you know, the the only increases that we've gotten since I've been here have just been those cost of living increases, which. Very much appreciated, but uh. I don't know, I I view my responsibility more as, I don't know, probably more public service than it should be, but I. I mean, I, we we work long, hard hours sometimes and and sometimes we're not very busy, it kind of ebbs and flows, but. I've never felt comfortable in in voting myself a raise. Uh, you know, when it comes to the the cost of living increases. Uh, if we give one person in the county a cost of living, everybody gets the cost of living, that's not something that we can legislate.
Otherwise, it's not a cost of living.
Uh, otherwise, it's not a cost of living, but no, I. That's all I've got to say.
I will say, I mean, I I I don't want to cut you guys off, because I'm sure you want to speak, but I I appreciate the sentiment and I. I admire that in our in our county commissioners that way, because that that's been the case for a while.
On that, on that subject, I'd like, I'm I'm good where we're at, or at least where I'm at, I um. Even though it's considered a part-time job, a lot of, a lot of weeks, it's at least full or more sometimes. Phone rings, you know, from six in the morning to eleven at night and you're dealing with things on Sundays and and it's it's all good. When I ran for city council. Fifteen, sixteen years ago, I uh, I won. And Renan, our recorder, came up to me, said, here, you need to sign these papers, and I said, what are those for? And she said, well, you're an employee, I said, what? You get paid for this? I was that naive, I didn't know you get paid for doing that, so like Mike said, it's it's it's, I consider it more of a public service and I I thoroughly enjoy it and. I'm happy where I'm at.
I would echo those those thoughts and sentiments and I appreciate that very much, John. When I got into this, I intentionally did not look at what the salary was, so that would never be an issue.
I did have a candidate one time complained to me that the salary was too low, but I. I basically brought out the same points you all just did in that conversation, so.
Thank you for that, is there any other comments? If you could please state your name.
Sure, sure, my name is Mike and Larson. I would just like to say I appreciate the thought of public servants being public servants. That's that's a great way to look at when you're when you're elected. These are challenging times, very interesting times and um, so. Public service being public service, I appreciate those sentiments, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing and um. We don't have a vote on that either, Luke, until next week or?
No, that'll just be part of the budget.
Or just part of the budget we vote on next week, okay, or next next commission meeting, I mean.
Are you done now?
Yeah.
Your time has expired, Luke.
Took it over before he was ready.
Um, we'll go back to public appointments, uh, we'll go to the public comment portion of the meeting, this is a three-minute time limit per speaker. For public comment, participants should not repeat others' comments and this is only for items not on the agenda. If there's anybody'd like to come up and. Speak. Seeing none, well, we'll uh, move to item number six, discussion on possible approval. Response to a letter from advocacy for community and environmental environment reg- regarding opposition to the Pine Valley Water Supply Project.
I guess I'll speak to that.
You want to speak to that, John? You have the letter, I think, right? Maybe some, you want me to get some background on this, John? So I served on the uh, water, uh, water is an issue in the West, it's water's gold and uh. And uh, this, at least the Cedar Valley Basin. The central Iron County, the central Iron County Water Conservancy District, um. Was formed many years ago, over twenty, maybe just pushing twenty-five now, um. But uh, in in the Cedar Valley, the um, this the safe yield of what. The state determines the safe yield of what comes out of the mountains and snowfall and rain and participate precipitation. Is twenty-one thousand acre feet and and we've been using in Cedar Valley, twenty-eight thousand acre feet, so we've been mining the aquifer. About seven thousand acre feet per year and um. The state of Utah and Parowan. The the difference. And I think Parowan's probably, I don't, I'm not sure offhand what the numbers, I don't know if anybody in here does, but um. I think, I suspect Parowan is also mining their aquifer to some degree, um, there's been a groundwater management plan study done for the. Cedar Valley Basin and the these, the Parowan Basin, I think is currently going through that groundwater management plan. And uh, it's the duty of the state of Utah to regulate water, it, the state of Utah owns water rights in the state of Utah, they just let us use them. And so um, with that groundwater management plan. They've basically said. They've drawn a line and I was part of that committee for many years, um. They've basically determined that nineteen thirty-four, nineteen thirty-five, somewhere in there is the is the cutoff, which is safe yield, so. So basically they've said, in these basins, unless you guys come up with some solutions on your own. We're going to start taking uh, water rights and we're going to start removing some of the newer water rights. Until we get down to safe yield and so. There's uh, there's been a lot of efforts and that's one of the things that this commission. I or this count, this commission, I believe is really important, their job is to appoint the uh, board members of the central Iron County Water Conservancy District. Uh, because their their uh. Their responsibility is to look out fifty years and and make sure we have water for our kids and our grandkids and residents. And that's very important and because water, water and this kind of infrastructure doesn't happen overnight, it takes a lot of years to develop different things. Um, I guess one, one example that comes to mind. Is the Central Arizona Project, when I was on the water board. is the Central Arizona Project. When I was on the water board years ago, we took a field trip down to Arizona and toured the Central Arizona Project. And that was, that was a project that was that was developed in the seventies. And they basically, they weren't using, Arizona was not using the, the allocated water rights from the Colorado River. And so they developed a system where they could lift water out of Lake Havasu, eight hundred feet vertically, and then pump it down a canal system within the interior of Arizona. And Arizona is really what it is because they did that, and they thought had fifty years. And so in in Iron County, in in Cedar Valley, Parowan Basin, the Enterprise Basin, those are three different basins. We're always looking ahead. One of those things that the Water District did many years ago was they became aware of the Wawa, Pine, and Hamlin Valleys. And and water rights, they were, they were, no water rights were adjudicated in those basins at the time. And so the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District went to the state of Utah, and they filed on water rights in each of those basins. In in Pine Valley, it was twelve thousand acre feet. In Pine Valley, it was, did I say that right? Wawa was twelve thousand. Pine was fifteen thousand, and Hamlin Valley was ten thousand acre feet. And so so there's been a, a lot of work done on the district's, district's part, including the board that serves on that, uh, in that, in that district. And in two thousand nineteen, I served on that board. I went to the state, you know, for a lot of different mediation and different hearings and working with SITLA, Beaver County, uh, the state water engineer, which was Mr. Jones at the time. And we signed, we came up, we came together as a group, and we determined a good, fair solution to water. Uh, we had determined that the Pine Valley would be the basin that we would go after. Uh, the Water District bought a, a, a section of property to put solar panels on to generate the electricity to pump that water uh, from the Pine Valley Basin to the Cedar Valley. And that would serve the water users of that valley. We filed on that water. Of course, this was before my time on the board, but when I say we, the district filed on that water, there was a lot of wrangling, a lot of a lot of negotiation and mediation and things. But in, in two thousand nineteen, there was an agreement signed. And the, uh, not only was that water adjudicated to the Central Iron County Water Conservancy Conservancy District by the state of Utah, but also the Fifth District Court by a judge. And the oldest water, the, some of those law, maybe this oldest law in the state of Utah is first in time, first in right. So the Water District filed on that water first, and it was adjudicated to the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District. So they own the water rights in those, those, those basins. I believe it was just the Wawa and Pine Valley that was adjudicated. I don't think Hamlin is, is, has been sought after and gone after yet. And so in, like I said, in two thousand nineteen, there was an agreement signed by all these agencies, including Beaver County. Uh, unanimously in their commission meeting, they voted unanimously to sign that agreement. And since then, there's been some, I don't know what a good term would be, maybe some backpedaling, um, some environmental groups and different things have, 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 have protested the use of that water. And I want, I want to make it clear that the Water District has spent millions of dollars researching that valley. And they did a groundwater management study on the Pine Valley water. And they did the same thing we are doing in Parowan, Cedar Valley, the West Desert, the Enterprise Basin. And they're determining how much water comes into that basement and what the safe yield would be. And they determined that fifteen thousand acre feet is a safe yield of what could be extracted from that basin and what could and, and here's the thing. There are safety measures put in place where if they find that the fifteen thousand acre feet is, is negatively affecting the, the, the users out there, which there's really not many users other than a few private wells. If it's affecting, there is a ranch out there as well in Wawa Valley. But if it's negatively impacting those water users, that that would be scaled back. And 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 that would be, that would be done. So this is a, this is a letter that the Central Iron County Water Conservancy Conservancy District is sending to the, the entities involved. And they've asked us to review that and to show our support. And so does that give a, I mean, that's, that's kind of the background.
Yeah. And and this letter is in opposition, actually. It's, um, it's from this group Advocacy for Community Environment. And they're opposing it. And so
Right. So by opposing it, we're supporting the project.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
That's what I'm
By opposing the opposers, you're standing.
Sorry.
Do you want to, is it, is it too long to read, or do we want?
I can.
I, I think it
Do you want me to read it in?
If you can, if it's not too long, maybe quickly. Use your fast voice, John.
Yes. Okay. Dear Commissioners and Iron County Water Conservancy District Board Members, Advocacy for Community Environment on behalf of Beaver, Millard, Juab, and Toowilla Counties, Utah Counties, provide this, provides this letter regarding the Pine Valley Water Supply Project, PVWSP, to ensure that Utah County's collective position is fully understood. As neighboring counties that share the same groundwater resources, we believe clear communication is essential on projects that affect us all. The Utah Counties wish to reaffirm that our position has not changed. Our counties remain fir-, remain firmly opposed to the project. The PVWSP, and I'm going to say project from now on, the project, the initial phase of the larger western, west desert pipeline is designed to mine and export via inter-basin transfer large volumes of groundwater from Pine Valley and Beaver County, Utah, for municipal use in Iron County, Utah. The project is outdated, poorly conceived, and ultimately infeasible. USGS hydrologic modeling raises the strong possibility that pumping at the proposed levels would cause the project wells to run dry, preventing the project from producing the water it promises. In the meantime, because pumping appears likely to exceed Pine Valley's sustained yield, it is predicted to trigger large-scale drawdowns and irreversible harm to aquifers, agriculture, and wildlife throughout the Utah Counties and beyond, including potential impacts to, to the shared aquifers that extend into neighboring Nevada. Any such transboundary water withdrawals and effects would implicate the need for by-state agreement between Utah and Nevada under the Lincoln County Conservation, Recreation, and Development Act of two thousand and four. Financially, the project is equally unsound. The twenty twenty-two draft EIS placed construction costs at roughly two hundred sixty million in two thousand nineteen, exclusive of financing, operating, and monitor, and monitoring, and mitigation costs, which stand to be astronomical. Even that construction estimate is now estimated outdated would be, and would be far higher today. The district's own analyses, based on those outdated figures, confirm that Iron County water rates would have to rise by three hundred and sixty percent to seven hundred percent, leaving residents with soaring bills for a water supply that is unlikely to endure. This burden will not fall on ratepayers alone. The district and Iron County have stated their intent to seek state and federal dollars to fund significant, significant portions of the project. In addition to draining local budgets, the project would commit millions of dollars in taxpayer and public funds to a venture that is likely to fail from a hydraulic, hydrologic standpoint. Those are dollars that could otherwise be invested in affirmative, in effective, sustainable water solutions across the state. Water challenges must be addressed through sustainable, equitable strategies such as conservation, reuse, efficiency, demand management, and fair pricing, not by exporting one county's problem into another's aquifer. Iron County should continue to work with water users to meet the needs of the community using existing water resources. Communities across the West have secured reliable water futures through these approaches without costly pipelines or intercounter, inter-county conflict. We therefore urge Iron County to reconsider spending millions of local, state, and federal dollars on a project that is unlikely to solve its water problems and would only push them several years down the road, harming its neighbors in the process and ensuring conflict. Asking your residents and taxpayers statewide to shoulder the cost of a project with a high likelihood of failure is more than unsound policy. It is a political mistake that could haunt Iron County for years to come. Instead, we encourage pursuit of a true lasting solution. We recognize that all of our counties face serious water challenges, and we do not want to see counties in both Utah and Nevada forced into conflict over a shared public resource. We invite Iron County and the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District to work with us on cooperative, sustained strategies that will protect our collective future. And I kind, I kind of scrolled, scrolled through it slowly during
John, do you have the letter that Paul sent?
I can find it.
Because I'd like to, that's the one opposing, but I'd like to read the letter that we're supporting. Did you?
Are you going to get me a glass of water?
I'll read the next one if you'd like.
Okay.
So you did send it to John?
It's in the packet, John.
It's in the packet.
Oh, well, that's easy then.
Let me look for it. You've got it?
This one right here, Paul. Just switch your screen back and you'll be able to see it.
Let's see.
I'll just follow you.
All right. So John's read that letter. So we're going to read this letter that you have put together, and and we're voting to support what you've, your response, correct? Would you like to say anything? I've kind of given, Paul, let me put you on speaker. Hang on. Paul, you're on speaker in our, in our meeting. Go ahead and would you like to give us any back? I give, I've given some background on the whole process with safe yield and what we've done in the West Desert.
Yeah.
Would you like to give any, any thoughts?
Uh, sure. Yeah, I just, I, I, like I said, I didn't hear exactly what you said. I hate to repeat anything that you said, but basically, we just wanted to highlight that we have gone through this process. These are water rights that were issued by the state engineer, went through a long, lengthy court process, and Beaver County was a part of that process, and so was SITLA and the state engineer as far as the, the legal portion of that, and they were settled, and these are now court-decreed water rights. And we have since moved forward with that in the, in the EIS. And we just wanted to clarify that, that there was a settlement and that Beaver County received water as part of that settlement. And that, uh, the, just the process of, of putting that water to use is been a longstanding policy of the state of Utah to put its water to beneficial use. And, and just as the state engineer had issued those rights and, and environmentally, we've gone through the process. And it, and it looks like there's no reason to believe that there isn't water there to develop. And the high, one of the highlighting portions, and I guess you're going to read it.
Yeah, I'll read this letter in response.
Okay. Yeah, you can read it and, and that way I can save some of my words there. But yeah, appreciate your support in, in us and in continuing to develop our water rights that we have received judicially through the court process and just like has been done in other parts of the state. Uh, and how the West was actually settled in bringing water, diverting water toward the people are.
Okay, very good. Uh, thank you, Paul, for, for that. And we'll read this letter in the record, and then we'll vote, okay? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So that was the letter the, the Water District received in opposition to. Let me read this. Am I going to read that?
Get your microphone.
Uh, John. Dear Commissioners, uh, this is, uh, to us regarding the opposition to the Pine Va- Valley Water. Well, this we are in receipt of the attached October twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five letter from Iris Thornton with advocacy for community environmental based in Arroyo, Seco, is it Seco? Seco, New Mexico. Through the letter, Mrs. Thornton indicates she is acting as counsel for Beaver County in addition to Miller, Juab, and Toowilla Counties. To be candid, we were surprised to receive that letter on behalf of Beaver County from this out-of-state environmental advocacy group. Based on the contents of the letter, it appears Mrs. Thornton may not fully appreciate the history of the water rights for the Pine Valley Water Supply Project and Utah water law more generally. We know Beaver County was intently, intimately involved in the former and is well-informed regarding the latter. As you know, approval of the water rights for the Pine Valley Water Supply Project has a long history. The applications to appropriate the water for that project were filed in two thousand and six. Approval of those applications was a result of several pieces of litigation and lengthy, lengthy settlement negotiations between the parties, including Beaver County, the Utah School and Institutional Trust Lands Administration, SITLA, and the state engineer. The settlement was beneficial not only to Central Iron County Water Conservancy District, but to Beaver County and SITLA as well. As you know, Beaver County received from the district application A seven, six, six, seven, A, parentheses, sixty-nine dash one eighteen, which has had, as part of the settlement, been approved for diversion of seven hundred and twenty-five acre feet of groundwater from Wawa Valley. It has since conveyed that water right to SITLA. Beaver County additionally received the approval of sixteen hundred and fifty acre feet under its application, A seven, eight, eight, one, five, dash, or in the, in parentheses, fourteen dash one twenty-four, for diversion of groundwater from Pine Valley. And SITLA obtained a water supply agreement under which it has the right to receive water from the district. The protests to the various applications to appropriate the litigation and settlement negotiations that all involve concerns regarding the availability of water in the Wawa Valley and Pine Valley aquifers. Those concerns are reflected in and addressed by the settlement agreement paragraph one provides in relevant part. The parties further understand and acknowledge that under Utah Code, section seventy-three dash five dash fifteen, the state engineer may regulate groundwater withdrawals within a specific groundwater basin by adopting a groundwater management plan in accordance with that section for any groundwater basin or aquifer or combination of hydraulic, hydrologically connected groundwater basins or aquifers. The non-state engineer parties express the understand and acknowledge that proper exercise of that authority may result in a reduction of the amount of water authorized for diversion under this agreement. And that's what I talked about in my previous remarks was there will be a groundwater management, management, uh, there will be a groundwater management plan to regulate the, what's happening. As Beaver County previously acknowledged, there is a statutory process in place to address the concerns Mrs. Thornton has raised regarding potential impacts of the project on the aquifers. The legislature has seen fit to vest that authority in the state, the Utah State Engineer who takes her role with respect to groundwater management very seriously. As you know, Utah, like much of the West, is literally built on water importation projects like the Pine Valley Water Supply Project. The challenges Mrs. Thornton raises to such projects on behalf of Beaver County through an entity with a stated purpose of empowering local communities to protect the environment and their traditional ways of life fails to recognize this reality and asserts a type of water nativism that is inconsistent with Utah water law and was rejected through the settlement. This position additionally threatens not only Beaver County's and SITLA's use of the Wawa and Pine Valley water rights they obtained through the settlement, but also more broadly threatens to divi-, threatens to divest Beaver County and its sister counties of water rights those entities have validly acquired through Utah's statutory process. Frankly, this is a position all of us should be concerned about as it threatens all of our established water supplies. We respectfully urge Beaver County to reevaluate the position Mrs. Thornton and advocacy for community environment have taken on its behalf. Sincerely, Central Iron, what do you, Central Iron County Water Conservancy District. Their board, House Representative Rex Ship, Iron County Commission, Town of Canarville, Cedar City Corporation, Eniot Corporation. So those other entities are reviewing the same, same exchange between entities. And I will say that when I was new on the water board, I don't know how many of you have driven across Pine Valley. It is a huge va- valley. It, it, it's far larger than the Cedar and, and Parowan Valleys put together. Um, I went out with the group from the state of Utah, the state engineers. I took my torch. We cut some caps off some wells that were drilled in the seventies. And, and we hired companies to go out and pump those wells and test them and, and do drawdown tests. And we, with the, with the millions of dollars the district has spent and, and, and engineering firms and different things have established there's, there's sufficient water out there for, for that to be used. By, by the Water District who filed on that legally, and it was granted through a court of law. So anyway, that is the issue at hand on this agenda item. And so before us is this letter that I just read that is, uh, is, is, as a, as a um, opposition to um, opposition to the letter that we received. So is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, I would entertain a motion. Is there any comments or anybody here for commenting on this issue? If not, we'll go to a vote.
Is it my turn?
I don't remember.
I don't know.
Uh, I think it's my turn.
It's been a minute since you.
It's, I'll do it anyway.
It's been an hour.
Uh, move for approval of the response to a letter from advocacy for community and environment regarding opposition to the Pine Valley Water Project.
Second that motion.
It's been moved to second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sorry for the long, 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 long discussion, but I think it was necessary. Seven, discussion, possible approval of presented proposed fee changes for parks and recreation. Maria.
Maria Twitsel with Parks and Rec, introducing Bryce Williams with Parks and Rec as well. So, um, where we've had a few changes to the parks this year in terms of, um, we split the.
Is that the right one?
Yes, that looks correct. Um, we split the group range into half so that we could poss, so that there are possibility of renting that range with two groups or going in and having someone who only needed a few bays could rent that side of the range rather than renting the whole range. Um, and so, and then we also have with Five Mile, we're bringing on the, um, the Historic Pavilion in two thousand twenty six as a possible place to, to rent. Um, we kind of, we felt like this was the time to look at the fees, uh, for all of the parks. Um, to see if we can, um, if we needed to, to raise them, um, to change them. Um, as you know, the cost of doing business has gone up. Um, and the, you know, the fees don't necessarily cover the cost of taking care of the maintenance of all the parks. Um, we also wanted to standardize the fees across the parks. We have different kind of ways of looking at the fees right now. Um, and we wanted to standardize those, um, particularly, um, when it comes to like events. Um, so events have kind of been based on certain parameters, but we all didn't necessarily have them as part of all the parks. Um, you know, like Five Mile has not had an event, um, application. And so we wanted to make sure that that was more in play. Um, we're taking into consideration, you know, the fact that it's kind of more based on the amount of people, amount of cars we're parking. Um, because at there, there comes a point where there are no parking spaces. There is nowhere to park. Um, and so we're just trying to keep those things in mind as we move forward. Um, keep in mind, this is just a proposal. Um, and we have, I have, I had tasked Stephanie and Bryce to look into other parks around the region and see what the prices are to make comparisons. Um, and this is where we've come to. So I would like to turn the time over to Bryce, if that's alright, and he can talk about what is being proposed.
Okay, so this is something that's kind of been needing to be done for a while. We're just not in alignment with, um, other facilities within the county. Um, we still feel like we're very conservative with these updated prices here. So, and it's hard to find exact comparables, um, cause some of our facilities are campgrounds, some are picnic areas, day use only. Um, and then we've got the shooting range on top of that, which there's no other comparable within our county. Um, there's the trap club, but it's not really the same type of thing as what we're doing. So I looked at, if you scroll through those, John, I mean, I guess you guys have this. Like I looked at Cedar City, um, at their fees for their parks and they rent most of their parks out, um, either for a full day or four hour blocks. And so I looked at that for like our day use, you know, for Woods Ranch, Wood Ranch and Five Mile. And then I looked at the Cedar Canyon Campground across the road up there from Wood Ranch and then, um, the Rocky Peak out there by Three Peaks. And then we looked at Pyramid Ridge, um, out there at the bottom of Shirts Canyon, um, to kind of get our numbers. I, I looked at the amount of tables, uh, the number of people they allow, um, whether they have water available or not. And that's kind of where I came up with my pricing on that. Um, most of them are not much of an increase at all. Most of them are five dollar increase. So I'll go over the shooting range first. So right now, um, we rent all six bays in that group area for up to twenty five people is twenty five dollars. Um, twenty six plus is fifty dollars. And then, um, for larger events than that, um, you've got to get a, for five hun, uh, let's see. For, oh, I guess we don't have a restriction on that for large events. Um.
Lord and Murray, oh, do we have one in place for the shooting range?
Okay, so we don't have a, yeah, we don't have, for special events, we do not have a restriction on the shooting range. Um, and so we've had a lot of use out there at the shooting range. Um, conflicting groups wanting it, you know, and certain groups wanting it every single weekend. And it, it's not really fair to all the other users to have one group come in and book every weekend and not have any availability for other residents or users of that area. Um, and so we decided to split that up. And we also see a lot of events that aren't using all six bays. They're only using the one bay with the covered pavilion. Um, and so what we're proposing on that is for one range. Um, so instead of twenty five dollars for all six, it would be the three bays for twenty dollars. Um, for up to twenty five people and then twenty six plus would be forty dollars. So we just did a fifty percent increase when we went up to the next, you know, twenty six plus is, uh, fifty percent increase. And then if you want to rent both ranges, it's forty dollars. Um, and then twenty six plus is sixty. And then we also, for sixty plus people, we want to require a special event permit, um, that would be approved by Maria. And we've got the form for that and the approval for, um, same process as we use on our other parks. Um, and then this is another, one of our other big changes is we want to, right now, we have it restricted to, you can reserve it two Saturdays a month. We want to also include Sunday, and so just call it a weekend. So whether you reserve it for Saturday and Sunday or one or the other, it counts as one of your weekends for the month so that we give availability to other groups to be able to have multiple day events. Um, so that you're not just reserving, you know, it counts for your two days or your two weekends a month. Um, and so that's our changes for the shooting range. And then Three Peaks, um, we want to change, I mean, you can see them there on the form there. I don't know that I need to read off each one. I mean, it's a five dollar increase. Um, so we're gonna differentiate between the two pavilions out there for the Bullock Pavilion and then our group campsite. We've done a lot of upgrades for the group campground. We've added three more, uh, small pavilions with picnic tables, fire pits, and we've added a fence around that area. Um, and done quite a bit of improvement out there this year. So the Bullock Pavilion, you know, would increase five dollars. Um, and then the group campsite, that's one of the big increases. Um, and that's based off the comparable group campsites that I mentioned earlier. That would go up to sixty dollars, which is still, um, I feel like very conservative for, for the facility you get out there and the fact that we have water available onsite. Um, and then, um, down here at Wood Ranch, um, same thing, we're gonna differentiate between the small and large pavilion. Uh, it'd be a five dollar increase for the small pavilion and then a fifteen for the large. Um, and that's based on the, um, ability to seat more people. There's more tables in the large pavilion. Um, and then Five Mile, currently we've got up to fifty people. Um, and ten vehicle, and we decided we'd, we want to remove the vehicle restriction. Um, so we're gonna propose, um, there, so we'd have two, right now it's just the one group site. So we'll have two sites there for rent. You'll have the group picnic site and we want to limit that to fifty people because of the parking restrictions we have there. And, um, so that would actually be a decrease of five dollars for that one. And then the Historic Pavilion, um, it's pretty tight over on that side too with parking, so fifty people max. And then we'd do forty for that. Um, and the reason those are a little cheaper than the other parks is because there's no, there's no water available at Five Mile. So are there any questions on that?
How long has it been since we increased rates?
Maria would know that answer, not since I've been here, so not within the last eight years. It's been a long time. And like I said, like, um, for instance, Cedar City, like they ran out their, um, their large pavilions. It's forty dollars for four hours. So, and then eighty dollars for a day.
I think it's very reasonable.
Yeah, and like that Cedar Canyon Campground, their group campsite, seventy five dollars a night. So I feel like we're still sa, staying very conservative, but comparable to the other facilities in the area.
Yeah, I mean, and if you compare that to the private sector with bidding or, I know, being in the construction world, in the last ten years, prices have almost exactly doubled. So, so that's, based on that and inflation, that's very reasonable to me.
Yep.
But it's still, I mean, it's, it's reasonable, but it still keeps it accessible for the, the residents of Iron County.
Correct.
Do you, do you guys feel like this would bring you up to where you're actually not having to subsidize? The, you're, you're still gonna probably have to subsidize the, the upkeep. Uh, you're just not gonna get enough money to pay.
No, there's, there's never gonna be enough to pay the full bill, but.
We brought in ten thou, a little over ten thousand dollars last year in fees and whatnot.
So in other words, subsidizing the parks is something that we'll probably continue to do.
Yeah, that's a benefit of being in the county that we provide to the county citizens as well as provide economic development, you know.
The fees would have to be what, twelve times higher to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it also helps us to try and to encourage people to come here, to bring events here as well, particularly with Three Peaks. Where our fees are low enough that we can, um, recruit, but, uh, but they're high enough that, you know, they know they can't take advantage of what we're, of the services that we're providing, so.
It's a pretty great county. Sorry.
It's wonderful, but, yeah.
Okay. Oh, if there's any, no more discussion, entertain a motion.
Make a motion for approval presented, presented, proposed fee changes for parks and recreation.
Second. It's been moved to second and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Um, well now.
Oh!
Oh, sorry, uh, go ahead.
I'm Pat Brower, I'm the owner of Iron Mountain Training Group. Um, we, uh, of the ninety two times the range was rented in two thousand twenty five, we rented it sixty times. I believe we're the group that they're talking about wanting every weekend, which isn't actually the case. We want it every other weekend, which is a normal ask for a USPSA affiliated club, which is what we are. Uh, here, I'll give this to John.
Yeah, and I can distribute.
Emails for members of the shooting community. Uh, a bunch of emails ranging with their concerns that they wanted me to bring before the, the commissioners. Uh, so I'll just read this real quick. An overview, this packet contains thirty emails from local shooters, community members, business owners and, uh, representatives from established shooting organizations. These individuals participate in events at the Iron County Shooting Range and are directly affected by the, the propos, proposed price increase or changes to the range structure. They, uh, were notified Saturday afternoon that the proposed pricing changes would be discussed at the Monday commission meeting, leaving very little time for shooting community to review, prepare, or provide input. These emails, uh, represent their request to be meaningfully included in the discussion. And I'm still getting emails this morning of people I didn't have time to print off. So still more emails coming in, but summary of the key points from the community. Um, one request for, uh, adequate time and transparency. Nearly every email expressed concern that the community was not given enough prior notice. Uh, notification came late, late Saturday for a Monday meeting. Shooters were previously told that they would be kept.
I disabuse you of that, it was, we posted it on Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I guess specifically I had asked someone to let me know. And I didn't get that notification till Saturday. Understand that that might be on me, not checking out the minutes on Wednesday, but.
It's not like it's in flashing lights, but it was posted on Wednesday.
Okay. Um, shooters were previously told, well, let's see, uh, they want the county to pause and allow public input for, before it's finalized on the price increase. Um, and number two desire to understand how the increased fees will be used. Um, many individuals, uh, asked the county to clarify what the improvements or what improvements the additional revenue would support. How these changes would benefit the range and its users, whether funds would be directed toward upgrades that we've asked for, the shooters have consistently needed. Um, so far, I mean, there have been zero improvements made on that range.
Uh, since when?
As long as I can remember.
Uh, so I don't shoot a lot. I used to a lot, but I know the last time I was out there with my daughter for Hunter Safety with Blaine A. Um, I was shocked at the improvements in that place. I mean, it was like, holy cow, they've done a lot out here, so I.
Well, maybe the, the overhangs and stuff, but specifically the.
Tables that were there, the, the, the berms that were built, the.
Maybe that, that's included in the overall shooting range, but we're talking about the reserve bays that we use.
Okay.
Yeah, uh.
So you're just talking about the bays?
The, the reserve bays. The group bays. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, one thing is during the summer games, we had to pump out, I don't know how many tens of thousands of gallons of water in order to use the bays, uh, for the, the summer games match. Otherwise it wouldn't have happened. Um, that would be one improvement we'd like to see. Um, but I mean, like I said, we're, we're the one that are renting the range and providing a lot of the money that's coming in. And, and we don't, like I said, we, we don't have, um, any opposition to prices going up, but we want to see what's coming back to the people that actually use the range.
Was the water for dust?
The water?
Yeah, it was storm water.
It was, uh, yes, rain.
Oh!
So, so it doesn't have drainage out of the basins, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
It puddled it.
I don't know, it, I think we calculate it to over thirty thousand gallons or something out of the, out of the bays. Um, so let's see.
We need a French drain in them to let them, let that flow out.
Yeah, improved like drainage just off that west side, I guess. We can be more specific later, but yeah. Um, uh, some of the suggestions that the, the community had for the practical shooting range, or we call it the practical shooting range because that's, you know, what we use it for. Uh, multiple highlights, specific long-term issues and solutions such as dedicated storage for match equipment and storage, uh, training materials, more shooting bays to accommodate growing participation, improved drainage and grading to reduce washout and safety issues, better scheduling options for matches, training, and public use. These items reflect practical needs that would increase participation, participation tourism and long-term use of the range. Um, then we also, in, in the emails, we have support from established organizations like Southern Utah Practical Shooting Range. Go ahead.
Can I say something real quick? I'm Riley Shotwell. Um, I think one of the thing that Pat is concerned about with our range is, is Pat does have a great community of people that are supporting him. Going out, I'm a shooter there. I actually own two businesses in this community. I'm a general contractor and I own a gun shop here in town where we do gunsmithing. We're part of Pat's community and it's just getting bigger. It's, this, this community is growing and growing and growing. And I think one thing that Pat is trying to bring up isn't that the, the fee of the range and that the range isn't getting better. That, that is happening. But, um, from what Pat is doing, it's gonna grow a lot. He's getting a lot of people. The summer games this year, um, he did ask me to come out and pump out water because their bays were clear full of water. Bay number one is just a lake when it does rain. Uh, like, I thought we were having a boat out there to be able to shoot out of, there was that much water in that bay. So I think what he's trying to get at with all of this is, is he's wanting to grow it and make it a big thing. The summer games this year, we had eighty contestants or something like that, and we're just seeing it getting bigger.
The reason we could only have eighty is because that's how many bays we have.
Were you the one that were, were you, were you the one that were proposing something further to the west with Frank Nichols?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and I understand there's roadblocks in the way of doing that. I still think that there's things that we can do to do that. But also talking to Ken just a minute ago, they're building bays facing south. There's a, a big section from where the reserve bays are now on the south side of that road that we could build six more bays. That would help us for next year's Utah Summer Games, double the amount of participants that we can have. These people are wanting to come in for two days, spend money on hotels, food, all these other things. Hundred and fifty people that want to come here, bring their families and shoot these bigger matches. And that, I was like about to get into that after I kind of described. About to get into that after I kind of described what Southern Utah. No, you're good, that's that's great, no. So Southern Utah Practical Shooting Range, they're the range down in uh, Washington County. They just threw a nationals match, six hundred people. They do several level two matches, they're called. Uh, bigger matches, uh, three hundred plus people. We're we're at a point where if we had the facility with my group, that we could do level two matches. They're two-day matches. Sometimes three-day matches where people bring, you know, three hundred shooters, bring their families to come spend time in Southern Utah. It seems like a no-brainer as far as the money that we're bringing into the community. As far, I mean, and and what we're asking for is a a place to do that. We have people that wanna shoot, we just need a place to do that. Got professional shooters that are in their world champions, um, in their discipline, national, multiple national title holders. Um, so let me just wrap up, because I've been going for a minute now, so let's see. Submitted statements are explaining the positive impact Iron Mountain Training Group has on the community. How how IMTG supports responsible firearm ownership and use, uh, safety. Um, how improved facilities could bring significant economic and recreational benefit from the county, to the county. Uh, the role IMTG plays in growing structured shooting sports in Southern Utah. So.
So you're not opposed to the increase? You want, you wanna see the increase go towards improving the range?
And we wanna see a facility that we can grow with, right?
I would say he's okay to having more of an increase. I mean, he he wants to be able to bring people here.
Yeah, we could easily do that. I've I've been in contact with Southern Utah Practical Shooting Range. They're they're having to shut down some of their level two matches. And sponsors, their big sponsors, Barry's Bullets, uh, Justin Taylor. Uh, he wants us to start throwing level two matches and bring in three hundred people to this area. And I mean, all it's gonna take is a facility. We can manage the rest, like.
Do we have room to add more to to the south, to dig those out and build more? Bryce, can you come up and address that? There's three there to the south now.
Yeah, so we've actually had problems with those south-facing bays, the with the paintball range that the BLM came and added. We're getting ricochets over there, and we've had to work with them, and we've had to make those be pistol-only bays. And those are actually, yeah, those are actually on our radar right now. Um, cause we already have, like, the the way the dirt slopes, I've heard that the bullets actually are like launching up out of the back of those bays. Um, that was just made, uh, where to, someone just told me about that last week.
Pistols aren't an issue.
The pistols are what's ricocheting.
Oh, the pistols are the issue.
When they're shooting down low, I had a guy, uh, someone that actually works for the county tell me he went out there shooting. And he was, he was, he could actually see the bullets launching up out of there, and so that's definitely high on my list of things that we need to address. Um, and so we've already had those issues with those south-facing bays, and it's very hard to um. Police that area and make sure that people are shooting pistols only. We've put up signs, we've put painted it, but. Um, I don't know about adding more facing that way, where we've already got the problems, and you've got the solar farms right there too, that. We'd even be getting closer to those uh, solar panels there if we started expanding to the south, and that's really the only area. That we have where we could expand our our range to make it any bigger. Um, so as far as improvements to that group area, we did replace the whole fence fence in front of that this year. It had a uh, wire panel fence that kept falling down. We went in and the jail crew helped um, do a new barbed wire fence along and through that whole area. And add the new gates um, to potentially be able to split that. Um, we've also been talking with Bruce about extending the east and the west bays out to a hundred yards. To make more rifle shooting available in that area, since it's such short bays right now. And I also asked for in my budget for a, for concrete and an awning for that um, east bay in there, so that both. The east and west bays in there that we're planning on extending out will have a covered area to shoot. Yeah, so that one right on the right-hand side of the screen there in that group area, nope, in the group area. Right there. So add another, so the other one, the the one on the west doesn't have a concrete pad, we're actually gonna. We're planning on doing a concrete pad there and another awning.
Show me where the water was.
In that bay where that green dot is?
That whole area was full of water? Bryce, is there, is there, is there a way we can dig a trench on the on the on the west end of that to drain that?
Like, we've, we talked about on those south bays too, like digging them down in to stop the ricochets, and that was the problem that came up. Is then we're gonna have this water puddling like we have, and so I'm. Yeah, I I mean, you could add some culverts, I guess, in the back end, but I really feel like they need to slope down in to keep those ricochets from bouncing up out. And that's something we're gonna need to address on those south-facing bays that we have.
It's probably just an outlier on moisture right then, right? I mean, that's probably not.
It is, like, that bay, every time we go out there, it's a pond. It's so deep in that bottom corner, because all six of those bays.
Drain to there, everything drains right there.
So if you took that very farthest bay.
The furthest west bay and and could drain that, you'd be okay. It'd solve the rest of them.
If you could dig the end of the bay like he's saying down to help with ricochets. And catch all that water and then put a culvert in that back corner right there, because the elevation on this side of the bay out into the. The native land. Is lower.
Oh, so you could easily put a culvert through there and drain that?
So we could add a culvert.
That doesn't sound like that'd be a big deal.
No, and see, I've I've never been contacted about the water in there by anyone. I mean, when the summer games came, did you guys try to reach out to me?
It was literally, it was, I was out there at two AM pumping it, so like calling at two AM to tell you that there's water out there, it's too late.
Yeah, well, we were never contacted, I just wanted to make that aware.
Well, that's okay, and and the thing is, is it isn't a point fingers, it is a, I would like to see it go forward and become something. That we can bring a bunch of people to, and that was one.
We're definitely willing to work on that. I mean, the water issue, the drainage is not a, that's not a big deal. We can definitely work on that. Like I said, and we we've, we have the opposite issue in those south-facing bays, they don't, they drain all out, but then we get the ricochets. Shooting up out of there. So and then also, we've done a ton of weed removal in that group area this year. Also, like, that area was completely overgrown. If you go out there and take a look, there's hardly any weeds left in that area. We've sprayed it, we've pulled them. Uh, you can see in that picture, there's a huge pile in that. Um, yeah, that bay, that's tumbleweeds. We burned all those last winter, um, just to get rid of that and clean that area out, but. Yeah, our improvements, uh, we have done quite a few other improvements, you know, throughout the rest of the shooting range, like Paul said, and. So and and it's also a time, there's only two of us for for four parks. This isn't our only facility, and so we have big projects going on at other parks. Every year is a little different. On what park we can focus on for each year. Sometimes it's the range, sometimes it's three peaks, sometimes, you know, it's our other.
So I've taught, I talked to Frank Nichols at length about this, about him working with to move to the west, because he owns that property and he was willing to work. But I talked to the sheriff and he's concerned that the, they like being on the end behind a gate, because they've got so much invested in their range that they don't want people to. Vandalize it, which they do, and so, um.
Is there?
I don't know if the sheriff likes, but I, you know, it'd be nice to go west, but but.
Is there access from the west that you know of?
I don't know.
So I guess here's. The the gate and the stuff that does block the, sorry, the gate that does block the uh. Police Department range, it it's just a, it's just a three-string wire, and then it's just a panel gate. If we could improve upon that by blocking all of the police department off, let's say with chain link. Or something that kept their stuff safe away from people, a higher fence on, and they and and. They are saying about building some ranges, shotgun ranges on the south side, and you just made an easement through there, keeping their stuff safe. Would that be an option to just be able to travel through, you know?
To access more more facilities to the west? Ken, would you like to come up and talk about that or?
Okay, I don't think, I I I would not be, I wouldn't be. Good with creating an easement. There not only, I mean, if you create an easement with access, that's gotta be a twenty-four-hour access. There's a lot of things that go on in that range with tactics and other things that the public just doesn't need access to. I mean, I I think that. I I I think that creating or modifying anything through the law enforcement range, I I don't think's a good idea. Uh, and I mean, in general, we've discussed this over and over and over again. The county can't be responsible for providing somebody with a private business. A place to run their business. We can't be involved in in housing, we can't be involved in housing storage. It's just not appropriate for county funds.
It's, it happens in every other county that has a USPSA organization. It it happens in. Salt Lake County, it happens in Washington County. We have, uh, we are an affiliated USPSA group. Uh, and and.
But does the USPA, does your, does your group fund us to be able to do this? Where no, nobody's ever come forward and said, hey, we're gonna give you a million dollars to improve the range.
Well, we want to be able to do that. First of all, there's the NRA, uh, so we're working on becoming a nonprofit. So I understand that that you guys don't wanna fund a a private business. So that's, that's why we're, we're taking the next step and making a nonprofit with a board of um, directors and everything like that, just like the other ranges have done. Uh, we're, we were starting out, we didn't know what we're doing, we're just throwing USPA PSA matches, because we like to do it. We're not making money off any of this stuff. Everything that we make goes back into the club for targets, uh, whatever else we're we're doing, like. Fees to the USPSA for being affiliated. I understand that you don't wanna, like, you don't want the money, I've heard it said, that go into Patrick's retirement fund.
But I don't think that what he's saying is, Pat is just wanting to put a community together. For the community. Now, does he, does he go out and make a living training people at the range? Yeah, but he does that in the public base. He's not asking to have the bays look only for himself. This is for the club and the nonprofit and those parts.
Well, I I get it, but we, at this point, we don't have a nonprofit. And at this point, we have several other users. That come in and request use of the facility, but can't because it's scheduled out.
Is that a scheduling problem or a size of the range?
Both. I mean, if if we had a, if we had a huge range, it wouldn't be a scheduling issue, but we don't have a huge range.
We increase the fee and make the range bigger.
You'd have to increase the fee so damn much that there, uh, I mean.
We've had community members, like I said, that this, these thirty emails that we've gotten are. Is a tenth of the people we have that are involved in what we wanna do.
Well, the problem is, is room. Like, like Bryce said, I mean, we we don't have, the county only owns so much property.
Frank's willing to donate property, that's the point. And 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 the issue with Ken that I've talked to is public access, so if these guys could build a very secure fence. So that the public couldn't access it, I mean, could that work? I don't know.
I I think that the best option is to go on the south side of the ridge and go out across there. And around the corner of the solar farm into Frank's property and bypass our range altogether.
Where where does Frank stand and where does BLM start? Can you show that, John?
Not on this map, hang on.
Well, does Frank have, there, there's a road that accesses that property on the west through Frank's, it's just further down on the west. Without having to come through the law enforcement range.
So that's kind of the one thing too, is like, i- if it's gonna be part of the Iron County Shooting Range, like. We have to have half of the community go all the way around and we have, like, when there's just a straight shot. It's a two-hundred yard shot.
Yeah, you're not gonna drive through the law enforcement range.
Well, that, they're not wanting. They're driving around the range, right? But you don't wanna even wanna do that. But what I'm saying, could they, could they jog the road around?
So that's, that brings me. They just added south-facing bays, right? And and so what's the issue with them? Fair enough, we could, we can manage that.
I think we'd do well if we could convince the BLM to move their paintball range.
They're not gonna move it.
That's the craziest thing I've ever heard of. That's just crazy.
There are now.
There are here now?
Picture's outdated.
So we can't jog this road around and.
BLM does stuff all the time.
The BLM just had us move our fence and our boundary to the other side of that ridge, because they don't want people obviously up on that ridge, but then it just. Yeah, I don't know.
On the south there, that's Horse Hollow South Road, that's probably a RS two-four-seven-seven road. This guy right here.
Well, and their fence comes clear up to, like, right up to the corner almost.
Oh, it comes that far?
Yeah, it's right up on top of there, and so. Um, and they go, um, like Mike was saying, they, I mean, some of their training, they come up in these trees.
I didn't understand that at all. I thought it was just here that you trained in.
Here's another idea that we had, um, they do this at, down at Supps, at the the range they have in Washington County. If we go further north of the the current reserve bays and just build some more bays facing back the other way, or still facing north. That's, that's an option. Six more bays on the north side of the bays where they're at now.
Well, that puts you downrange from a thousand yard.
So there's, there's, I mean.
Supps in St. George has sixty-foot tall berms with dirt, and their bays are set up that way. So they're, they're stacked on top of one another, downrange of each other. That's how Washington Counties is set up.
That'd be a lot of work to get.
Well, everything, I, I mean. What we're asking is like. Get in so that we can get.
This, this room is, this room right here is probably to this, that's probably twelve feet to this ceiling. That's huge.
Theirs is tiered, so they do go. Downhill, so their, theirs is tiered that way, so I'm sure that's how they got.
It was tiered down instead of, that's the difference.
So I think that's how they got such high firms, but it was just an option to try to see if that would be unavailable going that route, but.
So where is the access through, from Frank's property to the west? Is there, is there a road that goes into there?
So it's now through the solar field. If you look on, like, I had to use OnX, but that road continues on through here.
But that's over the, that's the road through the BLM.
This used to be the access, and it comes right through here like this. That was the only access that came to this section. But it's gone now from the solar field, and I don't know, maybe Frank could be okay with plowing a new road up to it, but.
Knowing Frank, he would probably be willing to do anything you want.
Right, so that would.
He's already expressed that.
It was just hard for.
I mean, when I talked to Frank, he was very positive about working with you guys on his property and helping you in any way he could. We just, we've just gotta protect the law enforcement, that they can, they can be protected and use their training appropriately without hurting them. But it sounds like it would be a great addition to Iron County, in my opinion, for the, you know, bringing these groups in, but it sounds to me like the. Solution is we don't have big enough ranges to meet your needs, and you're probably gonna have to move west and work with Frank and maybe build a new road. I don't know.
Are there any um, of your counterparts in other states that use private ranges, and is that economically viable?
It it is, uh, not for us economically viable at this point anyways. There, there are the ranges that do that.
Pat's just not a billionaire making a whole bunch of money training people how to shoot pistols. You know, the club, maybe someday down the road can get to that point, but. What Pat's trying to do is trying to grow into something that we could bring and be a huge benefit to Iron County, like Supps is to Washington County. And I think another thing too is like the the police officers, we have lots of guys who come out and train with Pat and shoot out there with Pat. We did a close-quarter combat class, and there was four guys out there, officers, and go, man, we wish we had. More of this kind of training that we could do on our own, that would help us out. And I think that's where he's got something that's really unique, is and needs to grow it.
Well, can I interject one thing? The agenda item is, is for the proposed changes to the fees. We are so far out of where the law allows us to continue this. This discussion, like, I mean, we're twenty minutes outside of what we're legally able to discuss in this meeting.
And I apologize, and I apologize for not giving you time to comment on their fees.
That's okay.
It's, it has, has.
So I guess back to.
But but you could, you know, if you wanted to get on the agenda with John and come back and talk some more.
Yeah, so on the fees, just to wrap that up real quick, the community is asking for more time to give their input on on the fees and kind of hear back what we're gonna get. From them. The the improvements they've made have not helped what we're trying to do there out there at all, and like, as a matter of fact, the guy's. Dog almost lost his eye the other, yesterday or last weekend, um, out there at the range. dog almost lost his eye the other, yesterday or last weekend, um, out there at the range. It was, was yesterday because of the barbed wire fencing. Um, anyways, so before the commission, I mean, you guys have already voted.
Was it on a leash?
Uh, yes, it was.
Park ordinance says it has to be on a leash.
Well, how come they use barbed wire in a non-animal containing area?
It's, it's confusing, but it's beyond the point.
We have grazing animals that come into the range.
Into the shooting range?
Yes.
Well. Sorry, uh, so, so before the commission at, or goes ahead and votes for the approval, we're just asking for a little bit more time to get community involvement. I know that's not required.
Well, I, we have voted. We have voted.
They already voted. But I will say too, part of the reason I asked that question about are the fees sufficient? And they're not. And that's because all of the parks have to be subsidized by the county. So what are you getting out of the fees? Slightly less subsidies by the taxpayers to, to cover the parks. I mean, so it's not like a quid pro quo or any kind of situation like that. It, it's, it's slightly less bad from a, from a, an auditor standpoint. That's, that's, I mean, I, I don't wanna be too sarcastic, but you know what I mean?
I'll, I'll be sure to tell them you guys, that's, you guys' input and all those people that are writing emails is that, that's the way the county feels about it.
I.
Well, I, I, I'm not trying to be, I, I'm just saying it's already being subsidized. So now it's being subsidized a little bit less. And it sounds like the commission is, is willing to try and do something. We just haven't found a solution yet. And we've been at it for a while. We've tried.
I know, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I appreciate your help, John. Um, but anyways, yeah, so I guess that's really all, that's where.
If you wanted to get on the agenda for a further meeting, like Mike said, we've kinda gone.
Yeah.
Gone down the rabbit hole here, but um, if you'd like to, you know, put this on the agenda and come back and I think it's exciting to, I mean, cause I talked to Frank for two hours one day about this and he's willing to.
Frank is excited.
He's very excited and willing to work with you guys, but you're gonna have to find, it looks to me like you're gonna have to find a different access into, into that area.
Which is, yeah, totally fine.
I was, I, I wondered too about talking to BLM. Looks like there's a little bit of a road there. Maybe, maybe you could come up with.
Our range. That, that indicator on the paintball range, that's not accurate. It's actually back in there where the road forks.
Okay.
That's just a bad spot for a paintball range in my mind. If you got a shooting range right over the hill.
Terrible plan, but.
All things said and done, I think that, yeah, we want a good thing for the community. I think we could bring tons of people here. I think this would be a destination for shooters to come and shoot these big matches. And I, I think we have the opportunity to do it here. I'm willing to do it, you know, so anyways.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for shaping, Tom.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, okay, now we are going to convene as the Board of Equalization, number eight, review and approval of veteran circuit breaker, low income and blind tax abatements for the two thousand twenty-five tax year submitted after September third, twenty-five. Kayla.
Thank you, madam.
Okay, so I was here about a month ago. Told you the numbers that we had of everybody that actually put their applications in on time. Um, now this is the new numbers from everybody that submitted them late. Um, but what you have there in front of you is a comparison between the final numbers for this year and final numbers for last year. Um, obviously like our veteran numbers went up from seven hundred and forty-four veterans last year to eight hundred and twenty-six this year. Um, our circuit breakers didn't grow a whole lot, um, but enough. I mean, we could always use more. I think the elderly population needs more help, but that's another topic. So our reimbursement amount for this year is a two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. And we get reimbursed that back from the state. That covers the tax relief for the circuit breakers only. And we don't get any reimbursement for the veterans or any of our indigent or hardship. Um, so our total abatement numbers did go up. Last year was one thousand seven hundred and five and this year was the one thousand seven hundred and seventy-one, which the majority of those was the veterans. I don't know if you guys have any questions, but I wanted to touch on one thing. Um, just as a a public announcement, public service announcement for you guys as well as the community, um, there's a bill, it was in there last year that didn't pass. But it's going in again this year and it's ultimately to get rid of the circuit breaker program altogether. And that just targets, puts a target on the elderly population. Um, Iron County has a lot of elderly people that live here. They've been here for generations. They don't wanna leave.
I do have something to report on that.
A lot of their homes.
That, uh, the same senator put forth the same bill and it did not go out of committee.
It didn't. It didn't. He's, he's still trying. Um, he's rewriting it, adding different things, but he is still trying to just get rid of circuit breaker altogether. Um, yeah. I mean, I, I wouldn't want to see the elderly population in Iron County be placed out of their homes because they can't pay their taxes. So I, I encourage people to reach out to our senators or to whoever to try and get the shutdowns because I, I don't wanna see that. Um.
Do you know what the new bill number is that he's pushing?
They haven't published yet.
Okay.
No, they don't have anything for this year, but.
Okay.
Yeah, it needs to be shut down. I'm glad it didn't pass last year, but.
Just post it on that, please.
Yeah. So I do have these for you guys to sign. It's just the comparison, the final numbers for reimbursement as well as all of the late, late applications. Um, so that's all for me.
Any discussion?
No.
Motion?
I'd move for approval of the veteran circuit breaker, low income and blind tax abatements for the two thousand twenty-five tax year submitted after September third, twenty twenty-five.
Second that motion. It moved a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Michaela. Let's see. We'll now reconvene as Iron County Commission, um, and go to personnel. Jennifer? You got a big one today compared to last week.
Fortunately, I have nothing. So this item, um, I put on a little bit preemptively. So we're gonna strike that from today's calendar and I'll put it on probably at the beginning of the year.
I have given her a hard time about it.
He has, and I deserve it. It's fine.
No, no.
Listen, I was directed, if you tried to push this through, I was to shut you down.
I'm, I've been told by many people. It's fine.
Which, but I, I knew that you wouldn't work. But I was directed to maybe use physical violence.
Okay, sounds good. Well, I will avoid that.
Well, it's from Carrie. So you know, we're all terrified of her. For good reason.
Okay, thank you.
What's up? I talked to her, but I don't, I'm not gonna propose, I'm real educated on it, but I did talk to her. So we're gonna go to county boards. We have a, a, a issue to talk about, which is the Mountain View Special Service District and that's Paula Milby. Um, would you like to come up and tell us about?
I guess I'll have to.
Tell us about this? You're not shy, so I know you can come and talk.
I'm not shy. I'm Paula Milby. Um, I'm the technical liaison for Mountain View Special Service District, which is a special service district that was created forty years ago by the county commission in nineteen eighty-five. I inherited it when our, our old water operator died.
And remind us what, where you cover?
Um, it's a hundred, it, it's less than a hundred lots out there below Bridle Path. So it's Iron, Iron Springs Road.
East of Bridle Path.
Yeah, east of Bridle Path. Yeah, it used to be called Poverty Flats.
On text, there's, yeah. Poverty Flats.
Anyway, um, so I have known for a while that the board had not been appointed appropriately. I don't think it was ever appointed from the time it was originally created in nineteen eighty-five, but I don't have all those records. Um, and nobody ever comes to the board meetings. Nobody wants anything to do with it. Where every, all the board members are volunteers. So, but there has, has come a, an occasion has arisen where we need to be able to execute legal documents and so I had to call Seth Overston, who's my government auditor and tell him that I had, was operating without a properly appointed board. And he just went, call John. Have him get you on the commission, give him a list of the current officers and they'll take care of you. And I said, I thought he was gonna be surprised. He said, no. So, so here I am. I have given you guys the original creation document and the, um, current uh, appo- dates. I went back through and figured out what the date should have been based on the date of the original creation. And now John has all that information.
So where to approve these? You would like us to approve these three individuals?
Yes, sir.
Now, there's Charles Milby. That sounds like some.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah. But I, but I am not, I'm, I'm not technically involved with the, the operations.
I'm teasing Paula.
Yes, I know. Yeah, you know, actually he, he has lived out there for forty years. And has probably done most of the repair work and line installations out there since he bought the lot out there. Cause he had to run his own main line and put his own connection in when he bought it. So, yeah, he is.
So you would like us to, um, to.
Ratify?
Ratify Charles, Charles R. Milby.
Uh-huh.
And his term would be from one one twenty-five to twelve thirty-one twenty-eight.
Yes.
Which would be a four-year term. A Elizabeth Cockrell?
Yes.
One one of twenty-five through twelve thirty-one of twenty-eight, which is four-year term. And then Kim Hunter, one one of twenty-three to one one of twenty-seven, a four-year term.
Yes.
And you'd like us to ratify those?
Yes, sir. That's, that's predicated on the original appointment dates so that it stayed in sync with the original creation document.
That's perfect. Legal, Sam? We good?
And I would just admonish you that as changes happen on that board or as people expire.
Only if they die. That's how we replace our.
There's only one way to expire. Okay, that's, that's fair. I get it. Uh, yeah, I've met some of that, but, uh, please, and I'll give you a card, call the clerk's office.
Oh, certainly. And I, like I said, I mean.
And I hope I'm retired by the time that happens.
Yes. I work with Seth on a regular basis and, and I keep him abreast cause he's on a water.
Seth won't be, he's a young buck.
Huh?
Seth won't be retired. He's a young.
No, he's a young buck. But, um, everything else I'm cool on. You know, the state auditor, they love me and everybody else loves me. My report's going on time, but I did.
We appreciate that. Luke appreciates that.
Luke doesn't see my stuff. It goes straight to.
He only sees it if there's a problem.
And yeah, there, I am no problem. I am never.
That's why he appreciates it.
That's what Seth always tells me. But so anyway, that's, that's why I'm here. Saying you told me I might not have to come, but I came because.
I'm glad you did.
Paying my taxes.
I did that this week too. It was painful, but I, yeah.
But I figured I, I could get the taxes, the dried beef, the board appointment, and then the turkey on the way back from Cimbria.
There's nothing wrong with it. Was that a, was that a motion commissioner?
It could be, if you'd like.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Absolutely.
They moved a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, thank you very much, Paula. Um, do we have a closed session, John?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, so uh, chair declares this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sweet. I didn't, hey sheriff, that helped me a lot because I didn't, in my mind, I've always thought of your range being on that side of the road. I didn't understand you.
I didn't understand you.